Hello, hello. We have a full house. We have a full house. And so if you have a seat next to you, if you can raise your hand, because we do have some people standing up, please raise your hand. We want everyone to-
And if you can consolidate so that people on the edges can access that seat a little more easily?
Yeah, yeah. So there's some seats. I still hear see some hand raised. If you are in the hallway, please come in. We don't have an overflow room, but I think we can accommodate everyone.
You had people lined up, right?
Yes, we do have eight. The slots are full today, so. So we will not be taking the vote on. We have another hand over here and some down here in the front row. We have plenty of seats if you're out in the hallway and you want to sit down. Okay, so just for your education, we will not be having a vote on the camping ordinance this evening. We know we have a lot of people here for that and the Wortland project. We want to hear from everyone, and so that's what we're here for. So thank you all so much for coming. We're going to go ahead and get started. We don't have to come out of closed session because we did not have a closed session, but we will start off with a moment of silence. Thank you all so much. So we do have a recognition today, and you'll see them. They're the really tall ones in the orange t-shirt, and that is our Charlottesville Boys High School tennis team. They won the state championship last year. Come on down in front. So I was talking to Natalie, who played tennis for Charlottesville High School. She was looking for a t-shirt.
Not well.
But she couldn't find it. So I'm just going to read the certificate. It's really short. Certificate of Achievement, Charlottesville City Council proudly awards this certificate to the 2425 Charlottesville Boys Varsity Tennis Team in recognition of an outstanding season for winning the second state, second straight state championship. Thank you so much.
Can you, can y'all say something?
Yeah, I do want to say something. So my name is Andy Jones. I'm the Director of Student Activities at Charlottesville High School. And so, yes, we're here to recognize them as state champions, back-to-back state champions. But I think the greater thing that we can find from them is anytime you go past Charlottesville High School, whether it's the weekend or late afternoon, you will find a bunch of these kids out there playing tennis. And it's really what we drive for, right, is getting kids to love a sport, to be out there, to find joy in something, and all of them have, and not only they find joy in a sport, but the friendships and the relationships they've built from this team has been amazing to watch. And it's what we aim for, for all of our teams at Charlottesville High School. So thanks for being great models, guys, and let's continue the success this year. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So we do have a couple of other announcements. As Brian bring that up, I would like to announce that the Charlottesville Albemarle NAACP, they're having a Freedom Fund banquet on September the 19th. And they are have Speaker of the House Don Scott will be there, but they also will be honoring many of the leaders, elder leaders in our community, Dorothy Armstead, Verlice Bell, Dr. Robert Jest, Ms. Edith Good, Eugene Williams, and Teresa Price. So please contact them, purchase a ticket. It's a great event, September the 19th, the Charlottesville Albemarle NAACP Freedom Fund banquet.
Thank you, and I have an announcement of Mr. Charles Alexander. On Monday, September 8th, 2025, has been designated Charlottesville 12 Day by the Charlottesville, Virginia City Schools. This day will mark 66 years since 12 black students bravely integrated all-white Venable Elementary, now Trailblazer Elementary, and Lane High School in 1959. The Charlottesville 12 has two historic markers, an annual scholarship fund, and sundial in each city's school garden. The Charlottesville 12 bring, excuse me, the Charlottesville 12 being the first African-American students in the South to integrate all-white schools, a pivotal moment in the American civil rights movement. On Monday, Delegate Katrina Carlson will present a Charlottesville Resolution from the Virginia, excuse me, from the Virginia General Assembly. For more information, contact Mr. Alexander, Charles Alexander, his phone number is 434-202-0773.
Thank you so much. So we're down to-
I've got two announcements. Two more announcements. First, next Sunday, September 14th, is the next monthly Neighborhood Walk that's sponsored by the Bike and Pet Advisory Committee. This neighborhood will be JPA, Jefferson Park Avenue, will meet at Endeavor Cycles. Sunday, September 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00-ish, bring comfy shoes and a hat, and it's just a chance to kind of meet new people and explore the neighborhood. The Historical Resources Committee does a great job of putting together a fun fact sheet about each neighborhood so that people on the walk can learn something about what they are looking at. And this is a monthly series that B-PAC puts on, so if you can't make this one, please look out for the next one. It's the second Sunday of every month. My other announcement is that on September, I can't believe we're in September already, on September 27th, 2025 this year, will be the, this year's Loop de Ville, which is a trail bike run or walk that circumnavigates the city entirely on our public trail system. So it's a great way to, again, get out, get some steps in, meet new people, and learn a little bit more about the city where we live. I did it last year for the first time and was, I've lived here my whole life, was shocked at the amount of trail coverage there is that I hadn't yet explored. So very much looking forward to doing that again this year, and I invite all of you to check it out, loopdeville.org. You do have to register. It doesn't cost anything, but it kind of lets the organizers know how many people to prep for. So please check that out, and we'll hope to see you there and that we get good weather.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We narrowed the opportunity, and before I begin, there are a few seats. Again, if you have a seat open, if you can raise your hand, because we have some people outside that-
There's four seats down here on this side of the aisle.
Yeah. Just great, great. Thank you so much. We had the opportunity for Community Matters. We have eight people that have pre-registered to speak, and then we will have the opportunity for eight more during this time, and I would just get a few from each section. And then there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone that didn't get a chance to share your comments. So the first speaker to, on the list is Bethany Robinson. Bethany Robinson? Is she making her way? I don't, I don't see it. Yes.
And for everyone who's speaking tonight, please make sure you speak into the microphone so that the folks watching at home will be able to hear you as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beth Robinson, and I am here to speak against this ordinance. I have lived on these streets, not once, but multiple times. I know what it's like to face long, cold, dark nights with nowhere safe to go. Those nights were terrifying. And I can tell you, I would have never been able to rebuild my life back had I been cited, fined, or jailed simply for trying to survive. So I ask you directly, will this city also cite and fine the uppies, the wealthy, for spreading out a blanket at a park, for laying down at a festival, for resting their head in public within city limits? Or does this only apply to our unhoused neighbors? Even Charlottesville's staff have admitted there are not enough beds or shelter for everyone. Yet this ordinance would punish people outside, living outside, while offering minimal, safe, dignified alternatives without even designated camping areas, just punishment. Back in August of 2024, residents and advocates made it clear. We denounced the "lock 'em up" rhetoric. We asked for solutions rooted in dignity, not criminalization. Yet here we are, debating whether survival should be treated as a crime. And make no mistake, even if the base violation is low level, it can quickly escalate. Citations turn into unpaid fines, fines into warrants, and warrants into arrests and criminal records. And once someone has that record, it causes it to nearly be impossible to get housing or a job. It traps people in the very cycle you claim you want to end. The unhoused are not strangers. They are our neighbors, and most don't even have access to basic sanitation, let alone a bed. Criminalization will not fix that. All it does is deepen suffering and punish people further from stability. You simply cannot punish people out of poverty, and you cannot legislate away human need. I implore you to choose empathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Mary Joyce Scala, 2320 Highland Avenue. I am representing Preservation Piedmont. We ask that you do not allow the demolition of 1301 Wortland Street. Your only decision tonight is whether the BAR acted correctly in denying demolition of the Worten Baker House, one of the city's oldest buildings, one so significant to the city's history that it was among those first protected. The applicant wants you to think that the BAR erred by failing to discuss the public necessity of demolition, one of 16 criteria the BAR must consider. But last May, when long-term Bar member Louis made the motion to deny the demolition, she clearly stated that she had never before seen a demolition request where every single criteria supporting preservation of the building is met. The BAR fully understood what is at stake here. The applicant, however, didn't even show up. The applicant has made other false assertions, too. In their appeal letter, the applicant tries to pit affordable housing against historic preservation, provoking simplistic divisive, short-term thinking, but that's wrong. Our community has visualized something better, that both are necessary and desirable goals. BAR member Schwartz pointed out that the comprehensive plan is not just about more density, more housing. It is also about protecting our cultural and historic resources. This is not a choice between disparate goals. Better housing and the preservation of our community go hand in hand. Back in early 2023, a different applicant received BAR approval for an apartment building plan that preserved the Worten Baker House. Under the new development code, a similar layout with additional units is entirely possible. But we don't know that because the applicant did not even explore an option to incorporate the Worten Baker House. They went straight for demolition, thinking that council would just roll over. This discussion is really about the continued relevance of preservation in Charlottesville. Will you continue to allow the unnecessary destruction of our protected properties instead of supporting our comprehensive plan? A better outcome allows historic resources to celebrate our history and to transform what may be, like the Verve, another otherwise soulless housing project. In the past, Charlottesville has benefited from forward-thinking local developers who understood how historic districts add to our city's culture, identity, and economic well-being, how this interwoven fabric of old and modern make it more desirable. This developer does not. BAR member Tabanee noted that the conversation between new development and old properties contributing to the history and story of this place will keep Charlottesville a unique city, a destination city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fogel?
I guess I can move this, right? Instead of sitting on her lap?
Yeah, you can move it out, sir.
Thank you and good evening. When I first heard about the ordinance to criminalize the homeless, I was shocked, followed by absolute fury that continues to this day, that you would even discuss, even discuss, an issue of making people who were suffering from a lack of shelter into criminals. It's disgusting. Your city attorney has relied on a decision by the Supreme Court of the right wing of the Supreme Court. Is that where we stand? Donald Trump has asked all the cities to prohibit sleeping and camping. Are we with Donald Trump? We don't even know who this came from. It was just dropped on the agenda. There was no community engagement, as has usually been required, because there was absolutely none. Nobody was talked to, not the service providers, not the people who have cared about this issue. It is absolutely and completely infuriating, outrageous, unconscionable, and inhuman for you to even consider an ordinance like this as any kind of solution to the problem we face here in Charlottesville. You have gotten the solutions. You know the solutions. They range from what the service providers are urging you to do, set aside an area of the city where people can camp out. And they range to what we should be doing, which is building housing. Building housing, because the solution to homelessness is housing, not the criminal law. And to characterize everybody in this community who's unsheltered as a criminal is disgusting. And I'm hoping that any one of you who has, we don't know who proposed this. Is any one of you willing, have the courage to stand up and say, "I propose this"? Let's see if you have that courage, because if you do vote for this, we're going to be laser-focused on your inhumanity.
Thank you.
Good evening. I always love following Mr. Fogel. Because it's my intent to speak on the same thing. Well, Councilor, City Manager Saunders, Chief, I urge each of you to please reconsider this coming proposal to attack the homeless here in town. No one, and I repeat, no one, that is living on the streets or lying at night in doorways is there because they want to be. Their life circumstances have driven them to this point. This proposed ordinance only deepens their plight. Though on the books or in accordance with statute, it is a low-level offense. Can we honestly say how long or how many offenses will occur before a capias is issued for their arrest and ultimate incarceration? Stuffed into a jail in a system that is already designed not for rehabilitation, but for punitive measures. A system in a locality more concerned about expanding the numbers of prison cells than we are with keeping people out of jail. This appears to, in some ways, rival the actions taken by the dictating Fuhrer in DC. The homeless population here and elsewhere don't need a boot to the face or a knee on the neck. They need a hand up. From a city rich in resources, the homeless population deserves more from its leaders than simply spending a night out on a grassy lawn claiming to try to grasp what it is like to be homeless, knowing full well that they would be going home to their safe homes the next day. That was a slap in the face. It truly was. It was gaslighting at its best. We have a solution sitting right here on the mall, that hideous condemned building, the Dewberry Hotel. If we're really sincere about trying to solve this problem, do what this city has done in the past, claiming under eminent domain, which we've done right here in this area anyway. No, but we want to solve the homeless problem and stop throwing useless words at it. So I'll leave you with this. The righteous will answer him, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger and invite you, invite you in, or needing clothes and clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go to visit you? The king will reply, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." Then he will say to those on his left, "Depart from me, you who are cursed into the eternal fire. Prepare for the devil and his angels, for I was hungry and you gave me nothing to eat. I was thirsty and you gave me nothing to drink. I was a stranger and you did not invite me in. I needed clothes and you did not clothe me. I was sick and in prison and you did not look after me." They will also answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty for a stranger or needing clothes or sick or in prison and did not help you?" He will reply, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me."
Thank you.
Do the right thing, please.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Malo. Anna Malo?
Hi. I'm tired. I'm really, really tired. I have spent almost every waking moment fighting fascism since this administration started. There are fascists in every branch of the federal government. There are fascists trying to control our universities. When I read that an ordinance would be brought up to council today, I thought to myself, "Oh, great, fascists in Charlottesville. Haven't we done this before?" Usually, I would give you a set of statistics or figures or data that would prove why this ordinance would do literally nothing to improve the problem of homelessness in our city, but I simply don't want to, because I'm tired of being a human computer to prove that marginalized people deserve respect. So let me speak clearly. You will inevitably hear from a bunch of white people who work at six-figure desk jobs or people who own houses on Rugby Road, who say they volunteered at the Haven when they probably just donated clothes there once, who may have former addicts in their family who are weaponized every story in the book to justify their hatred and vitriol of people they deem undesirables. But I say to those people, "There is no justification." You will not cleanse your soul with the anecdotes of how one time a person in psychosis who was slowly dying of malnutrition didn't want your leftover sandwich. Because if you've never had to know the inhumanity of begging for water in a world where it flows freely, you've never been woken out of a two-hour sleep at 2:00 in the morning by a police officer clicking a flashlight in front of your face and yelling at you to move from a public park that you're staying in. If you've never had to put precious family belongings in a black garbage bag or fake being a Christian to gain access to a 90-day, 100-square-foot room with a lock, you will never know what it's like. You will hear from a person who brought this ordinance, who I'm not allowed to say what I want to say about him because of city council laws, that person will claim that he just wants what's best for the community. He will use the correct terms like "houselessness", and he'll probably name-drop a bunch of people and organizations to justify his ordinance. He will say it's not criminalizing because it's only a Class IV misdemeanor, but a misdemeanor is a misdemeanor. He will talk about open drug use, even though there's no safe injection site or in a 60-mile radius. There's not even a public Sharps disposal on the entire downtown mall. Why? But if you want to bring an ordinance to displace members of this community who have no less right to live on this land than any of us, you to me are no different than the fascists in the White House, because Ranspass is a fascist playbook. It's the legal justification to discard the people who do nothing for white supremacists who will discard them. So I won't be a human computer. All I can do is appeal to the council's sense of morality. When you lay your head down on the pillow at night and you close your eyes, will you sleep peacefully, knowing you didn't vote for this, or will the spirits of all that you have deemed unworthy pull at the fabric of your soul?
Thank you. Isis Newman?
Hi, my name is Joshua Balaloo. I moved to Charlottesville in 2017. I've been homeless ever since. I couch-surfed for a while. Worked the whole time I was living under UVA Bridge for a year. I worked six days a week. Poverty doesn't always mean homeless, you know? Some people are homeless by choice. Some people are homeless because of circumstance. Some get that way just because they didn't feel like taking the next step to actually get themselves out of it. And in none of those ways is it ever okay. I started out, when I came here, being one of the most caring, helpful people that even I knew. And it has taken its toll on me after seven years of being out on the street. But I've met some of the best people that I've ever met out there, the people with hearts. I've watched a community grow and take care of themselves. I've watched a community grow and take care of themselves. Some of them are drug users. Some of them are mental. Some are just like the people in this room. Some of them have day jobs. You'd never know that they were sleeping on a sidewalk at night. Not once, when I was living under that bridge, did anyone know, that didn't know me, know that I was living under a bridge. Including the pastor of my church and my boss, who actually dropped me off there twice. He didn't know I was living under the bridge because it was right next to Hampton Inn. As far as this goes, I was under this particular bridge that they kicked people out from under on Pantai's when that happened, because I went there looking for my brother. His little brother. Not blood, but he's been that way since I moved to Charlottesville. I ended up staying because I liked the people there and I wanted to do something to help. And so we became a community. When they first flooded the bridge under there for no apparent reason because it didn't rain enough to show cause for it, everybody lost a lot of stuff and they ended up having to move all their clutter really quick up to the front of the bridge. It never did get put back in order because we never got a complaint when they were on the backside of the bridge and I was sleeping up on the sidewalk. They sat there and tried their best. And we were told that when we moved out from under the bridge, that it would be okay to be along the trail as long as everybody kept things nice. So far, every other camp but mine, and I did it on purpose. Every other camp but mine looks nice. It's clean, organized. They've been keeping up with it.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that for this to move forwards, I'm going to be there every step and a way, fighting against it. And my friends will be too.
Thank you. The next speaker is Genevieve Keller.
Hi. Good evening. Genevieve Keller, First Street. Local preservationists supported the comp plan and the rezoning process for additional housing, along with adaptive uses and infill construction in historic areas. During both processes, city staff and consultants assured us that A B C and Conservation Districts were being retained with B A R review procedures remaining in place to approve or deny applications in our local districts. And that council would continue to deny demolitions when keeping significant historic resources would be the greater public benefit. The structural report explains that the Wurttenbaker House has no serious deficiencies, but instead has issues of neglect and lack of maintenance. Several large student-oriented housing projects are already in progress, increasing that inventory. The 12-story Verve, the Ivy Road Bloom, and others in the West Main vicinity. Wurtland Street already possesses a dense mix of housing types that the comp plan and the zoning ordinance envision. And there is an approved 2023 infill project for that property. There are other locations for future development that do not involve demolishing historic buildings that are designated by the city, and there are people willing to buy them and reuse them, including this house. I've been called today about a potential buyer who could do it. Wurttenbaker was one of the earliest members of the staff and faculty to move outside the Academical Village and initiate new residential development. Selected by Jefferson as UVA's librarian, Wurttenbaker worked in the rotunda from 1826 to 1891, was also sheriff and postmaster. The house is a rare surviving example of the pre-1850 era and a major contributing resource to the Wurtland Street District. Approved for certified federal tax credits in the 1980s, more dense residential development occurred adjacent to a rehabbed house as part of a complete project. This significant place on our local history warrants an updated tax credit rehabilitation, not destruction. This house spans our collective history as the enforced workplace of enslaved individuals, notably members of the local Woodfolk family and later home to generations of students who lived, studied, partied, and perhaps even once played music with Bob Dylan during his Charlottesville residency there. It's witnessed our history, all of it, our complete history that we want to reveal for 185 years. But on another matter, please tonight, or please in the future, consider the effects of West Main Street development on West Haven. As a planning commissioner, I voted against the standard because it did not consider West Haven connectivity. I've lived here all my life. I witnessed Vinegar Hill come down from the windows outside Lane High School. I saw West Haven go up and gradually be hidden and disconnected, because it was not disconnected in the beginning. Please don't let that happen again. Thank you.
The next speaker is Wendy Gale. Wendy Gale?
I'll be sharing my time tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Johnson. I am an advocate for public housing. I am wearing three hats tonight. Public housing resident, Legal Aid Justice Center, and for Public Housing Association of Residents. I am here tonight to ask you, or to inform you, that we are against West Haven residents and the Tenth and Page neighborhood. We are against that monstrous building that is being proposed, a 12-story building that's being proposed to be built on West Main Street. And the developer or the engineer, whoever they are, basically said to the B A R that they had engagement with the residents. Well, this started in April. We didn't see them until June, when they came to West Haven to tell us what they were going to do. Well, most of you know that you don't tell public housing residents what you're going to do. You work with them to say, "Here is what we would like to do." And basically, what he did, what they did, was just basically saying, "Okay, here's what it is. This is what we do in all these monstrous cities." We decided that, okay, we don't like it and you should not have met with West Haven separate from Tenth and Page because Tenth and Page is... West Haven is part of Tenth and Page. Let me move on. I am so upset this evening because here it is. You have a developer wanting to build a 12-story building with student housing where you have homeless people who doesn't have anywhere to go and we're not thinking about building affordable housing or even SROs that can help folks. I'm going to... I don't have time to read everything that I'm saying right here, but I remember this came up when Mill Walker was on council. And she basically told... Y'all basically said, "Council," at that time, "no." And most of this is being driven by the Downtown Business Association, tourism, and privileged white people, who does not want to see people with less privilege amongst them. You said, "Council said no then." I'm asking council tonight to all say "no" now. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was the last of the registered speakers. I'm just going to get one person from over here. Jessica?
Jessica Jackson, property owner of Charlottesville. Before I start, I just want to say, I came here very hopeful that everyone here would be listening and actually paying attention. But it's been very sad for me to sit there and watch one of the city leaders on his telephone and reading his notes when, just out of common courtesy, we should be listening to people. So I would just ask all of the officials, please pay attention and please don't get on your phone. And when you speak tonight, I guarantee you, I will not be on my phone and I will not be reading notes. I read the article from Charlottesville about this proposal. And there's some questions that I think the city council should require Chief Kochi to provide very clear, fact-based answers to. The first question is why? Why do you want to abandon the law and the core value of our country that has governed our country for many years, that a person is innocent until proven guilty? The article in the Charlottesville newspaper states that priority was given to sites where criminal activity is believed to take place. So it does not have to be a fact that criminal activities are occurring, but simply a belief that criminal activity is going on. So someone can call and say, "I believe there's criminal activity on the site," and someone will be removed and their item's confiscated. So that's the first question. Why do you want to abandon one of the core values of our country that we all are innocent until proven guilty? Two, the biggest question is where? This ordinance would ban people from sleeping and storing their possessions on public property. Where does Chief Kochi recommend that the people who are taken away, where are they supposed to move? That has to be a definitive plan for where the people will go or will they be just told to leave? When the snow is on the ground or is pouring buckets of rain, where are they supposed to go? The plan for the people who are homeless, is it just to remove them? Is it jail? Or is it just to get them to a less visible site? And my third question is why? Why do you want this amendment enacted now? And I know you all aren't voting tonight, but it's just so disheartening to think that we would criminalize the poor, take their possessions, call it a crime to be poor. And I believe that it's much more important for our city to work on providing adequate housing. It's time for our city to stop letting big businesses and the University of Virginia buy up large amounts of land and just perpetuate poverty and inadequate housing, not only for the poor, the middle class, and the homeless.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Christopher Hall. I've been displaced and homeless for the past 10 years. When I was in Charlottesville before, it was a different environment 10 years ago. Now, I understand there is all this unrest going on because people are discriminating against us. They're afraid of everything going on. They see, you know... I worked in recovery. I was a peer support specialist. I have worked in the field. We all suffer, go through our own walks. But right now, this ordinance, it's appeasement. It's appeasement of the current administration. And it's appalling. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Greer Akkamback. I am Executive Director of Friends of Charlottesville Downtown. I am here to speak in favor of the ordinance on camping and storage on city property.
Please, please.
Friends of Charlottesville Downtown is by nature not...
This is a serious moral issue. You don't seem to get it.
Not a political organization. Our mission is to stimulate social and economic vitality, which puts me in the very unenviable position tonight to speak on behalf of...
Please, please, let her speak.
I represent many visitors and business owners who are afraid to speak in favor of this ordinance for fear they will be misrepresented in a way that affects their businesses and their families. We have a serious problem on the downtown mall and the lack of ordinances is leading to a decrease in visitors and business activity. We agree with Mr. Vogel that there should be a designated camping area in the city until we can provide enough shelter beds, but it should not be in our business district. The city has invested millions of dollars into the downtown mall and seen a return on that investment tenfold in the form of tax revenue. You have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the tax base that funds vital social programs. The downtown mall is one of our community's most valued public spaces. It serves as a destination for residents, families, and tourists alike, as well as a vital lifeline for the small businesses that line it.
Please, please.
Unfortunately, when visitors encounter encampments and cluttered belongings' aggressive panhandling, the atmosphere of the mall is diminished.
They should chase their hearts out.
Please, 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 sir.
This perception not only discourages tourism and local engagement, but threatens the long-term vitality of the businesses that rely on that foot traffic. Case in point, Al Kazzam Toy Store, an iconic business on the mall that has been here for 19 years, is now closing its doors. The owner cited a 35% decline in sales, attributing much of it to families no longer feeling comfortable bringing their children to the mall. Thank you. San Francisco is a cautionary example of what happens when cities delay action. Despite years of efforts and hundreds of millions of dollars spent towards programs and homeless shelters, the crisis only worsened until ordinance were put in place. Charlottesville is now at a similar crossroads. We understand that there are people that... That there is a small contingent, a small contingent of vocal people who feel that these ordinances are considered lacking conscience. But this is a dangerous position to take. A thriving city and a downtown mall benefits the entire city culturally, socially, and economically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John, 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 have a seat. Arthur Long, please, sir. John, please sit down.
John, John, John. Thank you. So my name is Reverend Dr. Arthur Long Jr. from the First Baptist Church downtown.
Can you speak up, please, sir?
From First Baptist Church downtown Charlottesville. And I'd like to, first of all, say, upon my arrival to Charlottesville, I visited the downtown mall with my family. The reason why the businesses are small and they're struggling is not because of the homelessness. It's because of the price point. When a person cannot afford to purchase goods at a reasonable cost, the businesses diminish. That's number one. Secondly, you got to realize is this. Homelessness is here for a reason because we've neglected the needs of these people. So instead of looking at the need of a person, social, economical, mental illness, or even substance abuse, if you can't meet these needs, you're going to always have this problem. When we're looking at one another, everybody in this room is dressed to what they have. But when you actually look at it, some of us in this room, even listening to me talk right now, are one paycheck away from homelessness. One paycheck away from poor. I come from a big city. And the reason why I'm here talking about this is because homelessness strikes hard to me. I've dealt with homelessness in Newark, New Jersey, even in Jersey City. You can shake your head or you want to, my friend. I dealt with this to a certain extent, with taking people who have mental conditions to rehabs and drug facilities where they can get help. Not just taking them or sending them, taking them by the hand, walking them to their destination and partnering with them along the way. You can't force this only on churches. This is a community effort. And if it's going to work, the chief got to reevaluate his circumstances here because it doesn't work this way. Because when you look at it, you're saying, first of all, it'd be a misdemeanor offense. How many of these misdemeanor offenses is it going to take before it actually becomes punishable? And then you look at it from another perspective that says you approved a budget for a jail renovation. renovation. Was this the backstory to say, well, listen, we renovate the jail so we can put homeless people there? So when you think about it, think about all the dynamics of it, and it just shocks me that after Trump signs this thing into law, now we're meeting about it tonight.
Thank you.
I'm co-chair of Impact Charlottesville, which incorporates 27 different faith communities in Charlottesville and Albemarle. I'm a resident of the county and pastor of Charlottesville First United Methodist Church in downtown Charlottesville, and I'm here to speak to this proposed ordinance on camping and storage. From the number of people who've spoken and signed up tonight, it's clear that we live in a community that recognizes homelessness is a major issue, and it wants to see it addressed with respect for the individuals affected. The congregation that I serve, along with a lot of partners in this city, has a long history to serve the immediate needs, but also to advocate for more housing and for more affordable housing, which is the only long-term solution to this. We're founding members of Pacham, which houses over 50 people, a night through the cold weather months. With our downtown partners, we have a feeding ministry that serves roughly 160 free lunches every day. Through Impact, we've pushed the city to dedicate $10 million a year to affordable housing each of the last four years, and we're investing in affordable housing for ADD individuals at 501 Cherry Avenue. Each of these efforts gives us the chance to develop relationships and to know those on the streets and partners who serve the same population. As I read this ordinance, I'm glad to see language that refers to, quote, "a compassionate and empathetic approach that ensures our unhorsed," I'm sure that means unhoused neighbors, "are treated with dignity and respect." I'm also glad to see the accompanying protocol, which encourages, quote, "a team approach connecting city staff with nonprofit partners and ensuring a consistent, fair response." I saw this in October '23 when our congregation, along with other congregations in the area, hosted a community meeting with City Manager Sanders and Chief Coaches to discuss ways to address the rising needs we were all seeing. And I applaud the city for considering serious steps towards providing more alternatives for shelter housing, including a year-round overnight shelter. But those plans are not in place, and my question is, what new thing will be put in place through this ordinance to provide hope for those with no home? The briefing summary says the city has no intent to criminalize homelessness, but what happens to individuals who are displaced when the alternative structures that we need are not there? There's a movement in this country that we've referred to that would use force first as a way to sweep homelessness out of the public eye. I'm grateful that this has not been the approach in our city, and I hope we will make our language just and make our language a reality and see this ordinance in the light of a whole approach to this very real problem. In other words, that we will consider it in the light of the people that we see every day who struggle to keep going and who are each one made in the image of God. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone over here like to speak? The gentleman in the back, I'll come back over here. Sir in the back with the
My name is Jordy McNish, and I live at 1226 Rockfish River Road. I had a statement, I still have it, but I just wanted to comment on some things that I heard. I heard Jeff Vogel talk about the idea of a designated camping area, and I think that's a great idea. I also heard the woman from, I believe it was like Friends of Charlottesville, mentioning the same thing and also support this ordinance. And while I think that's an interesting thing to pursue, this ordinance has nothing to do with that. This ordinance doesn't just, you know, protect businesses a little bit or, you know, do a little trimming around the edges. It makes being homeless like totally fucking illegal, like anywhere, you can't sleep anywhere. I'll just go through my statement, it's probably, I don't have time for it all, but I lived in this area the majority of my life. I began to experience periodic homelessness when I ran away at 16. The cold nights when I unexpectedly had to sleep outside were the worst because, you know, it'd be cold and I had no gear. So the sun would come up, I'd be grateful to at least go to the park for a couple hours and lay in the sun in relative safely because safety because no drunk person's going to come and kick me or something, you know? It's a great time to be homeless in the day compared to cold at night. More recently, I'm 37 now, in 2020, I lost my housing when I went through a breakup, and I camped in the Wool Mills neighborhood for about two months. I was working full-time still, well, I was recovering from an injury, so it was part-time going back into full-time. You know, I got to have visitation with my kids, and I was able to get my stuff back together and get into an apartment, or I rented a room, and that was great. And I couldn't have done all that, like, if I had to just rely on a shelter, I mean, you know, I'd see my kid until seven, you have to be at the only, and you know, I'm so glad we have the shelter, you have to be in at a certain time, there's like bars to entry and stuff, and the camping area or multiple areas or even not passing this awful ordinance allows people a little bit of autonomy, which can help them get it together. I do support shelters, we need many, many more beds, we need as much as we can do, we need the lowest bar to entry that we can possibly achieve, but just, this is like some like crazy dystopian crap, this ordinance. This is like, there's no, there's no tolerance here, like, aren't you guys all Democrats? Like, aren't you supposed to give a shit? I also wonder, I see this was brought by the chief of police, like, I also wonder if, like, once they get rid of homeless people, if they're going to kick nimbey yuppies out when they're sleeping on their blankets in the park after a picnic, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jean Catherine Gray, and I'm speaking as a business owner. I want to know why we are not putting our energy, our creativity, our ability to endeavor and make something new and apply it as a whole on the downtown mall to this problem? Why on earth would businesses get together and try to make it illegal to live instead of getting together and saying, we have an incredible resource in our community? Why don't we decide that we want to transform the feeling on the downtown mall by walking out to meet our homeless neighbors, by making sure they have the resources they need, by creating places where they can sleep safely? Businesses should be working together to improve our community, not tear it down.
I'm the Executive Director of the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, or BRAC. I've had the honor of serving in this position for almost two years. Prior to that, I worked at The Haven for five years. I served on the Pacham Board of Directors for six years, worked for the city of Charlottesville during the pandemic, serving many of our community members with financial aid and emotional support during a very unprecedented time. But before all of that, I actually experienced homelessness here in the city of Charlottesville. And there were times when I would wake up in my car, which I was blessed to have, and there'd be police headlights trained on my car, and I would wake up thinking, oh my God, am I going to get arrested because I'm homeless, because I don't have a place to live? Meanwhile, I should have been thinking, is somebody going to break into my car or even worse, rape me? This is the unfortunate reality of so many people who are unhoused, right? And there's so many human beings in our homeless system of care, not only here, but across the country, who are going through this same exact predicament. So I come to you tonight not only as the ED of a homeless coalition, but as also as a city resident and concerned community member about this particular ordinance that you're trying to pass. I've been on the other side of this trauma, and I've made it through, but not everybody is as lucky as me. This is not the time to be adhering to draconian Trump-like policies on some of our most vulnerable community members. Yes, we have Salvation Army, but many people can't stay there due to a number of reasons, lack of beds, lack of mobility to climb into an upper bunk, and yes, some people do abuse drugs and alcohol, but if you were going through the trauma of homelessness, wouldn't you do that, too? Handing out Class IV misdemeanors to people who have no designated place to lay their head at night is cruel and inhumane. BRAC and the continuum of care are requesting the following. Delay voting on the addition of Section 17-30 to the Charlottesville City Code until discussions regarding our community's proposed year-round low-barrier shelter develop into a more tangible reality. In the interim, designate up to three city-owned spaces for people experiencing homelessness to officially be permitted to camp. These camping spaces can come equipped with security detail for not only the unhoused residents, but people who are concerned for their safety in the community. Each site should be accessible to a Charlottesville area transit stop and have a maximum allowable number of residents for ease of management. Each site will be regularly visited by outreach workers and CPD monitoring. And also participate in a working group so we can work on this issue altogether, comprised of city leadership, Charlottesville Police Department, homeless services providers like BRAC, The Haven, Salvation Army, Pacham, and those who are invested in creating workable solutions for unhoused population. It's important to note that this conversation should not be happening without talking about affordable housing at the end of it. We need to create more permanent affordable housing, and Charlottesville should not be considered a world-class city unless we're talking about housing for all and not just the people who
So that was the last of the speakers for right now. We will have an opportunity at the end to hear, and we have received several, we have received several, we have received several hundred emails on this, and we continue to see them now. John? No, sir. We, we have received several hundred, and we're still receiving them now, and so please continue to send them. I can't say we've
What idea was this?
We have read them all, but we have definitely got an idea of it. We will be having this as a discussion in a little bit later on the agenda. So next, we have the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda?
Number four, minutes from July 7th, July 21st, and August 4th, regular meetings. August 6th, joint meeting with the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority and the August 15th, 16th, council retreat. Number five, resolution to transfer additional funds for electric buses, electric school buses in the amount of $10,032, second reading. Six, resolution appropriating opioid abatement authority cooperative partnership grant for fiscal year 2026 to the offender aid and restoration for expanded specialty docket services, $13,504.43, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating Virginia Department of Social Services temporary aid to needy families grant, $69,312.67, second reading. Eight, resolution to appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, Virginia Homeless Solutions Program in the amount of $440,885, second reading. Nine, resolution for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAEPER, for the program year 2024 to 2025, community development block grants and home investment partnerships programs, second reading. Ten, resolution to appropriate grant funds from the Ann and Jean Worrell Foundation for the KIP, Community Attention Youth Internship Program, in the amount of $42,480, one of two readings. Eleven, resolution to appropriate Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act grant, $452,704, one of two readings. Twelve, resolution to appropriate Virginia State Police FY26 heat equipment reimbursement funding, $10,000, one of two readings. Thirteen, resolution to appropriate $25,680 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, 2026 JAG Law Enforcement Equipment Grant, one of two readings.
Thank you. Is there motion to approve?
Could I just make the note that I was not at the meeting, the first meeting in August, nor was I at the meeting with, we met with CRHJ for the minute, so I can't opine on those.
Same with me for the July meeting, but
You're still able to vote on those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, are we voting electronic?
Yep.
It did, and I don't know why it's not showing, so motion passed, 5-0.
Okay. The next item on agenda is the City Manager Report. Mr. Sanders?
And there are some more seats down up front if people want to find someone to sit.
A couple of things for the City Manager's report. First, I'd like to introduce John O'Prandy. John has joined the city as our new emergency management coordinator. He joins us from the county, which is a different change of pace. We're actually getting someone from the county versus losing someone to the county. But what's interesting is John is coming back to the city, so just wanted to give John a chance to at least speak to council.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Sanders, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and working for the city of Charlottesville. This is my first day of my second tour with the city. I was with the city fire department many years ago in, I started in 1992 there, and then went to the county, as City Manager Sanders said. So Mayor Wade and the rest of the council, I'm looking forward to the work that we will do, and I have a great person, he's showed me around the city and parts of this building that I have never seen before and already have a good idea of kind of what's in store for us moving forward in terms of emergency planning and preparedness. And one of the things I'm most excited about in joining the city is it, as you see here tonight, obviously, it is an intimate place with a lot of involved people, and so I look forward to engaging with the neighborhoods on emergency management and preparedness issues as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
In addition, our city attorney has comments that he would like to share in regards to the zoning case as well.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I wanted to speak to you all a little bit tonight about the provided status report and the city's claim with respect to Gentry Locke, who has been representing us in handling the white v. Charlottesville zoning matter. I'm providing this in this setting, I think a lot of this information will not be new to you, I've provided it to you in a more confidential setting. However, I feel like the case has progressed to the point where I can be a little bit more open, and it will not affect our litigation posture at all. So as a refresher, back in May, an attorney who was representing the city from Gentry Locke failed to meet a filing deadline, failed to file an answer in time, which resulted in early June, the plaintiff's moving for default judgment against the city. And on June 30th, the court denied our motion to, for relief from that default judgment and to file a late answer, which of course, as you know, set us into a tailspin. I'm sure someday John Grisham will write a legal thriller about all the things that happened after that. I hope Danny DeVito plays me in the movie. But without getting in too far into that, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, obviously, at that point, we had a claim against Gentry Locke for possible malpractice. And evaluating how to respond to that, we had to consider a couple of factors. First, we had to consider how we're going to protect our financial interests, and to that, to that extent, that's why I approached Gentry Locke, we worked out a deal, which I can now tell you the full, and give you the full story on. First of all, the court, the firm agreed that they were going to continue to represent us in the case. I'm sorry, it's hard to, it's a lot of noise. We're trying. Hardly hear myself think. So first of all, we went to protect our financial interests. That meant ensuring that the firm would cover our expenses, we would not be paying any fees while they tried to correct this mistake, and they agreed to that. Second of all, we had to ensure that we had competent representation going forward. Now, it wouldn't have benefited us to change horses midstream, find new counsel, I mean, it's an option, but we would have had to pay to get new counsel up to speed, which would be an expensive proposition. And so in lieu of that, the deal we struck with Gentry Locke, we gave them a chance to correct the mistake. If they were successful in that, they were going, then we would move forward with them, and they would, we would pay them reduced fees moving forward. If they were not successful, we were going, they agreed that they would repay the city all the money that we had paid all of the money that we had paid for the, for the lawsuit and liquidated damages of $150,000. That was if they were unable to get the court to overturn its ruling. Now, fortunately, as y'all know, a week or two ago, the court decided to recon, on our motion reconsider, they reconsidered their decision and decided to overturn the default judgment. We're now back to where we're able to litigate the case on the merits. One reason I wanted to talk to y'all about this in this setting is Gentry Locke screwed up, and they didn't do a good job in that, but since then, they have acted admirably. They have acted just how I would hope they'd do. They own the mistake, and they've provided very competent representation ever since. At my request, they removed the attorney who was representing the city and who missed the deadline, and replaced him with some of their senior counsel. Michael Fenny, who's the head of their litigation section, has been representing us very competently ever since, and also Monica Monday, who is one of the very best appellate lawyers in the state. It was through their efforts, working very closely with, I got to shout out, our NDS staff and some of our public work staff, and even some members, some citizens in the community who worked very closely with us to help put together the defense of the judge, that ultimately got him to change his mind on the default judgment ruling. So I wanted to let y'all know that we're back on track. We, I'm going to be entering in this agreement, Gentry Locke, we're going to be paying reduced fees moving forward, which should save us some money as we continue to litigate the case, and we're very hopeful that when we get the case for the judge on the merits that we will prevail, and the city will have the zoning that you all voted for. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to provide you that update in a public setting.
No, just thank you.
No questions. Any questions or comments?
When's the next date something will happen?
At this point, we're now, our answer is now considered filed. We're just waiting for the judge to sign that order, but he does have it, and from there, we'll be talking about setting trial dates, discovery deadlines. There's a lot of litigation to happen between now and then.
Okay, thank you.
And the last part of the presentation tonight is for our Director of Human Services, Ms. Graves, is going to give a human services update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I was invited by Sam Sanders to talk about one of my favorite topics, which is the Department of Human Services. I had the honor of serving as the director. I've worked in the Department of Human Services for 19 years, and I do it because I'm motivated by the opportunity to make change in the community, to make an impact, and the caliber of folks that I get to work alongside. Just to start with our vision and vision, mission, this feeds everything that we do in the department. One, our vision is to be a place where everyone thrives by serving as the community's premier provider, meeting therapeutic needs of youth, families, and residents by supporting the community's efforts to improve equity and address poverty and its impact. Our mission, what we do every day, is provide services and program that improve and support the resilience, health, and well-being of youth, families, residents, and community organizations. We have our own strategic goals that sort of, sort of provide some direction for what we do, for our action plans. These five goals, one is to streamline system of care for youth and families. Goal two is to provide outreach services that promote the resilience and self-sufficiency of residents. Goal three is to make sure that DHS staff are highly functioning and supported and developed until they reach their ultimate potential. Goal four is really focusing on our organizational culture. We believe that we, the way that we practice our services and programs and community engagement is the same way that we want to engage our staff at the Department of Human Services. So fostering in our internal organizational culture that elevates diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Goal five is about the work that we do with our other service providers and other coalitions and boards in the community, so that's extending and galvanizing movement within the wider community in partnerships with an anti-racist, trauma-informed, and inclusive approach. So you'll see, we'll go into goal one. These are youth and family-centered services. We have three that fall in that line. We have the Community Attention Foster Families, or CAF. This division has served in this last fiscal year 101 youth in the foster care system between Charlottesville, Alamo, and Green County, and an additional 21 youth in prevention respite homes. Of those youth, 68% are served in what's called kinship families. It's when workers do their best to find a relative or someone that's known to the child because they have better outcomes when they're placed in homes that are called kinship homes. That's regarded best practice, and I believe the state average hovers around 25%, so we are well above that state average. Community-based services, that's where we do our work directly with primarily teens and adolescents and their families, so they served about 100, 421 youth. Some of the most familiar programs you may be aware of are the Community Attention Youth Internship Program. A number of you have engaged with those interns, and the Teens Give Service Learning Program, but we also have a variety of parent advocacy groups and skill-building groups. And then in January, we filled a vacancy to re-engage initiatives aimed at promoting well-being and success for Black youth and youth of color. This year, we have the Youth Opportunity Coordinator, Yvonneika Howard, has already implemented a new Book Buddy system that has started at some elementary school, and we hope to grow that program in other city schools. Youth council, the ones that you appoint, we're up to 15 members. We're starting the fall with a full youth council, and they will kick off their season in early October. Some of our adult-centered services, we have the Community Connector Program, so the Community Resource Hotline that utilizes the Pathways Fund that is funded by city council. Last year, they facilitated 896 requests totaling in $679,000 in relief, financial relief to residents. This impacted about 421 households in Charlottesville. 73% of those requests were for housing needs, and 27 were for, for utility bill relief. We also have a small housing navigation program that is for folks who are looking for a more stable place to live, maybe one that is within their budget, that may have some challenges in order to secure a lease. We have a small housing navigation program that sort of works with landlords and community members to make sure that they have a home that fits their needs. And then we do facilitate, again, a small emergency hotel stay program. Primarily, it's for families experiencing homelessness, because we do not currently have a family shelter. We served about 52 individuals in that short-term emergency hotel stay. Additionally, for adult-centered services, we have the West Haven Care Center. The Human Services Department supports one program coordinator, and she is joined by a staff member, a nurse practitioner from the UVA School of Nursing, and together they provide navigation and some, some work in the public health arena. Last year, they really saw an uptick in food insecurity needs, and so they were very responsive to that and built a onsite food pantry and served about 500 residents through that. And then Anchor, I was here in July and presented their year, their first year outcomes, but just to recap, 253 live calls for service, 142 follow-ups, which is after their initial interaction. It was a total of 395 encounters and 250 unique individuals. Goal five I mentioned was how we engage with our partners and other providers to build a better community. So one of the things, just highlighting here, we work with the Charlottesville Area Alliance. That's to promote an age-friendly community here in Charlottesville. I serve as the vice chair on that alliance. You all were charter members of that group. We continue to work in the re-entry field and support the one-stop-shop by offering some logistics and coordination there, and that will continue. Looking ahead, some major projects and implementations this coming year. I am closing on a position for Deputy Director of Adult-Centered Services. They're going to support building out Anchor, or future iterations of Anchor, and also support our Community Connector Programs. Our community-based services are going to explore more formal relationship with Charlottesville city schools to do more prevention work in the schools to prevent youth from engaging in issues around community safety. The Community Connector Program, right now, they're exploring a master leasing program with other service providers in the continuum of care supported by BRAC. There also, we're exploring how we might increase self-sufficiency services and efforts within our department. For CAF, the Foster Family Program, we're pursuing a grant to improve regional expansion of helping other localities develop their kinship program and family finding. And then, as I mentioned before, Anchor, we will be proposing for the city manager's consideration, the next phase of Anchor for FY27. That's just a nod to the link for more information and how to get in touch with me directly, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neay. Any questions?
Not a, not a question, but a comment for, you know, everyone here tonight. That item at the end about the Anchor team and the need and ability to expand it, I think is such an important point that connects with everything we've heard in public comment tonight. And so I just encourage you all, when our budget process begins, which it will sooner than we probably want to, email and advocate to increase the budget for that team, because that is a team that can go out to areas where there are individuals who are homeless or experiencing other issues and be able to try to connect people with services in a different way. So anyway, I just encourage everyone, don't end your advocacy tonight. There are so many budget decisions that we make or don't make that impact these issues so fundamentally.
Thank you. So we are now at our action items, and the first one is an appeal resolution. We're going to get some specific direction on it, but first, this is to appeal a Board of Architectural Review denial of certificate of appropriateness for demolition of a contributing structure at 1301 Wortland Street. Jeff, or, Jeff, can you speak?
Can I clarify if this is one or two readings?
One.
One, just tonight? Okay, thank you.
All right, Remy, does this control the? Let's see. It does. All right, technicality out of the way. Hey, good evening, again. Jeff Warner, I'm the city's Preservation and Design Planner, and in that capacity, I'm staff with the Board of Architectural Review, the BAR. The matter before you tonight is an appeal of the BAR's.
Jeff, can you speak up, please, sir?
I usually, no one has to tell me to speak loud. I don't know. No? Does this work? Tell you what, I'll go Coach Warner voice here. The matter before you tonight is an appeal of the BAR's denial of a certificate of appropriateness, a COA, to allow demolition of a structure at 1301 Wortland Street. After my introduction, I believe Steve Blaine is here, and he'll speak on behalf of the property owner, and then Mr. Zeimer, who is the BAR Chair, will speak on behalf of the BAR. And after those comments, we certainly can answer any questions that you all have. So quickly, on May 20, 2025, by a vote seven to zero, the BAR denied a COA for demolition of the Wurttenbacher House at 1301 Wortland Street. Following the BAR's action, as allowed by code, the denial was appealed to city council. The Wurttenbacher House is listed on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure within the Wortland Street Historic District. Locally, city council designated the Wurttenbacher House a contributing structure within the Worten, the Worten Street ADC District, and from that designation per city code, the BAR has purview over exterior alterations, new construction and demolitions, with of course, those actions appealable to council. The house was constructed circa 1842, we believe, 1842, 1843. It was built by William Wurttenbacher, who served as the university's librarian from 1826 until 1880. This two-story brick house was built in Greek Revival style in the late 1880, late 1800s. It was modified with the addition of a Victorian porch and an ornate cornice. The house was originally constructed on a six-and-a-quarter acre lot. While impacted by the encroachment of neighboring development, the house still retains its original and late 19th century appearance. It's worth noting that in January 2023, the BAR approved a COA for a proposed multi-story apartment building on the lot adjacent to the historic house, and that project would have preserved the Wurttenbacher House. So in reviewing this appeal per code, you all, council, will, as the BAR did in May, consider the review criteria for a demolition request, and also consult with the BAR, which we're here tonight and in the record that was provided to you. And also, per code, council may consider any other information, factors, or opinions it deems relevant to the application. So quickly, and there's a lot there, that's, those are the criteria for reviewing a demolition per city code under Section 5.2.7. So just briefly, I'll touch on a few of those to, for example, what is the age of the structure of property? This house was constructed circa 1842. It asks whether it's been on the National Register or the Virginia Landmarks Register, and yes, it's a contributing structure in the National Registered District, so it is on that listing. The questions of, is the property associated with a historic event, historic person, and yes, this was the home of William Wurttenbacher. He lived there from 1842 until his death in 1882, and as noted, Mr. Wurttenbacher was the university's librarian from 1826 until 1880. The question of, to what degree do the, does the house retain distinguishing characteristics and features? Aside from some repairs and encroachment of neighboring development, the house generally, generally retains its appearance of the original house and the late 18th century modifications. The question of, to what extent is the structure linked historically or aesthetically to other buildings within the district? So that would be within the Wortland Street District. This building is individually unique for its architecture and its association with the early university, and it's also a significant part of that cohesive district which represents 19th century dwellings associated with the early university. And another question is about the condition and structural integrity of the building. Per the applicant's structural engineer's report, the structure overall is considered adequate, and they had some recommendations of repairs. So finally, to provide information on the staff's response to the appellant's letter, the appeal letter, the comments include the following. The appellant stated that BAR failed to consider that demolition of this structure would have a public purpose or necessity. In response, staff notes that the applicant did not submit anything for the BAR to consider. In fact, they did not attend or even participate in the BAR meeting. The appellant stated the initial design concepts illustrate that the demolition and redevelopment of this parcel would yield 212 bedrooms with 300 bedrooms achievable with bonus density. Nothing of the, that sort was presented to the BAR. As again, staff notes, the BAR evaluates demolition on its own merits based on the design guidelines, which you all adopt, and weighs less heavily what development might be allowed by the demolition. Again, the applicant provided no information about proposed development, nor that did they refer to the approved apartment building at the site. The applicant, or the appellant, also stated that one of the city's primary goals is to support the opportunity to provide more housing in all city neighborhoods, and noted, they stated that council did not exempt Wortland Street in prioritizing the building of more housing. And staff notes that the code, the city code, includes historic districts and its protections, so all relevant code provisions are applicable to development proposals. So the city does welcome creative development, and in a situation like this, we would look for something that preserves the historic resources while accommodating increased density, which was indicated by the project that was included or approved in 2023. And so finally, staff recommends that, that you all render a decision by resolution to deny the requested COA. That's a COA that would allow demolition of the structure. Should council deny the COA, the owner may appeal to the Charlottesville Circuit per code. In. In addition, the code also allows a remedy by which the owner is entitled to demolish the structure if, for a period of 12 months, the property is offered for sale at a fair market price to a party that will preserve and restore it, and within that 12-month sale period, no bona fide contract is executed. Second, if council agrees with the appellant, there is a resolution by which you can approve the requested COA. So before proceeding the comments, is Mr. Blaine here? There he is, yes. So Mr. Blaine's here, Mr. Zeimer's behind me. Do you have any immediate questions for me?
I have a question.
No, sir, you're not here on this.
Are there any questions right now?
Excuse me.
What was your offer?
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall. Michael or not?
I just took to clarify, a couple slides back, you said that the appellant, the appellant didn't provide info, but we have it now. Does that mean when they applied, they didn't provide the info, but upon appeal, they provided it?
I didn't see anything about a, a proposed development or anything to the scale which they described, so no.
So the bit about 212 bedrooms, where does that come from?
It's in their letter. It's attachment, the first attachment in the Staffordford.
Right, okay, so it's in here, but it wasn't presented to the B A R?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it, that's what I wanted to clarify. And then, do we know, and this might be a question for later, do we know why the 2023 project didn't get built?
Excuse me, John.
John, Mr. Hall, you're being disruptive, sir.
Do we know why the 2023 project didn't proceed? The one that was approved? Was it the same?
I don't, no, I don't.
Same group or a different group?
I think the owner changed. I don't know if the individuals were involved in that. The LLCs changed, but I don't know if that's being pursued or not. When I had asked, there was, it didn't seem to be a decision on that, so. Like I said, we were evaluating, it's a, the demolition request, the city code has the things that we're supposed to review, and that's what we're stuck to. You guys can go, you can color outside the lines a little, if you wish, but the B A R was in its box.
Right, so that was my next question, was kind of a little procedural, along that same line, which you mentioned what should happen if council denies. There are a couple of remedies that they can take. If they, does that deny it permanently forever? Or if there's some project down the line or some other, would they be able to apply for a COA for demolition again later? Or not they, but someone at any point?
So I don't want to get into legal hypotheticals, because I know those things might likely be...
You're not a lawyer.
No, I'm not, sir. Please, let me speak.
You're a law.
You know nothing about me. And so the...
Mr. Hall, please, can we talk?
We're gonna have to ask you to leave if you keep interrupting.
So the situation with a, an approved COA, and that's either whether approved by B A R or approved by you all as council, there is a period of validity in the code, and that's anchored in certain actions, for example, getting an approved site plan, or if somebody were to get a demolition permit, things that would move the thing forward beyond that COA. But if, within that 18-month period, that's, those steps have not been taken, then the COA would expire.
But would the denial of the COA ever expire? Like if we tonight reaffirmed the B A R's decision?
Now we're getting into double, triple negative stuff.
Does that, does my question make sense?
I think it's a discreet, concrete thing that tracks, and then it's over, if that makes sense.
So my question's like, if we affirm the B A R's decision tonight, it doesn't get knocked down for this project, in some future potential development, could they reapply for another COA of demolition? Because, you know, things change.
Potentially, yes. Things change, and you can evaluate the circumstances in the project that comes before you at that time.
Okay, doesn't mean it's permanently not allowed to get knocked down.
Correct, yes, ma'am. Yeah, for example, the B A R personnel change, and it's possible a different B A R could view this differently, so yes.
Yeah, the city changes around that sort of thing. Okay, thank you. But for the immediate future, should we deny, they go through those processes that you described?
They could.
With like the 12 months of being on sale.
Right, and I really, that's where I hesitate to, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to offer legal advice, but the code provides remedies, yes.
The code provides, okay. And then, I know this has been the, kind of a process for the B A R, and the planning commission does this too, where they can offer suggestions, defer decisions, and then it comes back again. Does council have that ability?
I know in the past, and my predecessor's here, I won't put her on the spot, but I know in the past, council has referred things back to the B A R. I don't know if that's, I can't speak for the applicant on what they would want, but I know that the B A R, you know, stands, I mean, the question is not the development of the site or how it might be developed. The question is the demolition of the historic house. If something were to come back and had some variation of that, the B A R would have to look at that. But I would, I think it would be wise for the B A R, or for council, to take action on this, because, and not go back to the B A R.
Right, well, not go back to the B A R, but like if we told the, there's been negotiations with the B A R and the developer, or the planning commission and the developer, about if you make these three changes, come back to us.
You all abide your code, can consider other things and other circumstances. I defer to John on the balance of that.
Yeah, are we able to put conditions on?
I mean, I would assume, we've got something before, so we have to vote yes or no on...
This is purely a procedural question.
Are you suggesting add something to it, if that's possible?
In a way that the B A R and the planning commission do. Do we have that same...
This seems to me like a very discreet, like yes or no kind of thing.
It is. I never want to advise to negotiate from the dais. It very rarely leads to good outcomes. I would say, consider the proposal in front of you. You're allowed, as Mr. Warner's very clear about, you're allowed to consider things that are outside just the four walls of the application, or the four walls of what the B A R considered. But I would not want to try to create legally binding conditions or something like that in this kind of setting.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Just to, to clarify, you know, that certificate of appropriateness, COA, already exists to develop multi-story, multifamily apartment housing without demolishing the house?
Correct, yeah. And they have an approved site plan, so that, that's set. The COA didn't expire.
So multifamily apartments can get built on that site right now without demolishing the property?
Try not to look at what's going on inside the building, but yes, that's my understanding. Apartments, for who, it's, I don't know.
In, in the information from the applicant about what could be built by demolishing the site, I'm assuming that comes with no engineering work, no business plan, no analysis of what one option would compare to without demolishing the house versus demolishing it. In other words, we're essentially just being told to, you know, go on good faith that something they said is accurate?
That sounds reasonable, but I'd have to defer to Mr. Blaine to comment on what the applicant's intent was.
Yeah, he is.
I, I don't think it is either.
It is a little bit.
But it's a little bit. All right, my answer was, I would defer to Mr. Blaine and representing the applicant on that. I don't know.
And, you know, you went over some of the rationales for it being a property of historic value. There's, this is built pre-1850. How many properties in Charlottesville remain that were built before 1850? I think it was something like six or something.
It's very, very, very few. My house, built in 1884, is one of only 100 that predate 1890. So it's a very few that remain of this period, and certainly, I think of historical... I think, I'll speak louder again, very few. I don't know the exact number, but it's very few, and I think even fewer that have an association with the early history of the university. Mr. Wurttenbacher was, my understanding, appointed by Jefferson himself, so there is a historical connection here that's unique. As far as the historic nature of the property in the district, that's, that wasn't the B A R's designation. The state and federal designation had occurred in Richmond and Washington, but the local designation, which gives the B A R purview, that designation came from city council. So that, so the B A R's presumption is that, that historic character, that designation has been established. It's not necessarily to debate whether it should or shouldn't be historic.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
As I said, Mr. Blaine is here, representing the applicant, and I'm sure you have other comments.
Just a quick question for you. Is it, my understanding from some folks that I work with who know a lot about historic preservation, that this house is like the first, sort of the anchor house? Is that a way of putting it, for that whole district, Wortland Street?
Yes.
I know Wortland Street, you know, is a fun time of year, I understand this time of year, but that, that house was the basis for that ADC, is that correct?
Yes and no. The nature of a historic district is the sum of its parts. And I think we talked about this a couple of months ago about Chancellor Street. I mean, it's, it's intended to be a quilt, and you can't remove panels from the quilt and have it, you know, retain its integrity. Most of the houses that are to the east of this date later in the 1800s, so this is certainly the earliest building there, and it certainly anchors that, that development that you saw of the university, when you saw professors leaving grounds. You saw them beginning to occupy neighborhood adjacent to the university. So, but I think architecturally, this house is somewhat different in its age. Certainly, it was renovated in the late 1800s, but it's the, not just the architecture, but the story of that development, that, that, that period of development in the 1800s. So this is a critical piece of it. I wouldn't suggest removing it, and, but again, it's the sum of its parts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions right now?
Should we try that microphone?
Yeah, well, that's what Mr. Blaine is going to next.
Steve can talk loud, too.
Not as loud as Coach Warner.
It does scoot, if you want to.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Steve Blaine, representing the appellant. I appreciate Mr. Warner's summary of the criteria that the B A R followed and his findings. On whole, I think the B A R did its job, as it's enabled to do. The B A R is limited to considering only those criteria. The city council, on the other hand, is not constrained by the B A R's criteria. The statutes permit you to consider other factors or information that you deem relevant. Here, we believe the prevailing factors are the policies prioritized in the 2021 Comprehensive Plan and implemented through the N Z O to increase housing opportunities and thereby promote more affordable options for good housing. The council's decision tonight places two important policies at odds. Architectural preservation of historic buildings, which we value. The overarching policy to improve our city's housing stock and create more housing in an effort to address the affordability crisis. The city council, not the B A R, not the planning commission, not even a court, is the body that can determine which of those two policies take priority in this instance. It's our position that the housing policy takes priority over the continued preservation of the structure. This site presents an ideal opportunity for repurposing an underused parcel that results in more housing and responds to affordable housing needs. Under the ordinance now in effect, the site can achieve a density that will accommodate between 200 and 300 students. It's barely a five-minute walk for students to grounds. Concentrating more student housing in closer to grounds reduces demand for transportation and infrastructure traffic generally. We've seen a trend with new student housing emerging along West Main Street. This places greater stress on transportation infrastructure and impacts established residential neighborhoods. From the city's standpoint, the preferred land planning concentrates housing in closer to grounds for more efficiency and reduce transportation infrastructure. This is supported by the site's RX5 zoning designation, which is the highest density residential designation in the ordinance. Now, we're fortunate to have beautiful architecture throughout Charlottesville, both modern and historic, due in no small measure to the volunteer efforts and contributions of the B A R. I watched, but I watched the recording of the B A R's meeting, and I did not hear any of the opponents describing the structure as aesthetically redeeming. The old house sits wedged between mid and late 20th century apartment buildings on either side. It's isolated and somewhat removed from the Victorian-era dwellings along the lower portion of Wortland, below 12th Street. There's no uniform setback, with the apartments up close to the street and the houses pushed back. This is in contrast with the similarly designed buildings across the street on the south side of Wortland that have a uniform setback. We think it's still possible to show the structure some dignity in removing it. The applicant has completed a 3D cloud scan using thousands, actually hundreds of thousands of measurements, and the most up-to-date technology. This will enable future study of the structure in 3D. My last, I guess my last point is, it's possible to focus on the structure and still lose sight of the history associated with it. Historic preservation is about objects associated with history. History is all the stories of humans who ever lived, each person having their unique story. I had the good fortune of hearing Ken Burns speak at the Naturalized Citizens Ceremony on Joyce Fourth at Monticello, which is a very moving ceremony, if you've ever attended, or you have a chance to attend, you should. Ken Burns compared history to a puzzle that can never really be solved. We can search the stories of our past to learn about ourselves, listen to other points of view, and in doing so, develop empathy. So what was Mr. Wurttenbacher's story? We were told that he was appointed librarian at UVA, and the census data indicates that he was a bookstore, which seems consistent. Wurttenbacher also owned enslaved persons. In fact, from 1840 to 1860, he increased his ownership of enslaved persons from four to 11 persons in 1860, including an eight-month infant. Aside from the moral question, one might ask, what a bookseller had use for 11 slaves? These and so many other questions come to mind that may never be answered. The documents relating to the historic landmark nomination and the local landmark designation leave out these facts. In the over 40 years of regulatory-imposed preservation of this old house, there's been no scholarly advancement about Mr. Wurttenbacher and the community in which he lived. We're not lacking for old buildings as much as the curiosity to know and understand the past. In conclusion, our request is, with respect for the past, to focus on the current and future housing needs of our citizens and hope for prosperity for all.
John, John?
I rarely get applause, but thank you. And I have, I have the, actually from the census.
I'm starting to hear... Lloyd, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, Mr. Blaine, I'm curious. The, the information we've got is that you are, your applicant is requesting the ability to put in, what, 212 apartments? Is that right? Is that right?
The current zone, the NZO will permit that density. What's happened is the architects have done, they have to do a feasibility analysis to do a program. The, there's no building design or pictures to show you tonight, but before you embark on any project of this site sort, you have to do the feasibility analysis, you have to know what your, your footprint to begin with. The dilemma we have with the criteria is, Mr. Warner said, if we had a building, a picture to show, that's not an appropriate criteria for the BAR to consider in issuing a demolition permit.
So is the answer to my question yes, or is it no?
The answer is, I'm sorry, what was your question again? I had the answer all in my head, but...
My, my question was, War, is your applicant asking for approval for 212 units?
Well, no, we're asking for a demolition permit. The approval for 200 units would be under the zoning ordinance, which has byright ability and would require us to go back to the BAR. Actually, the BAR would be the only review, Planning Commission, I suppose, the site plan, but the BAR would have to review any project that was brought forward, whether this is demolished or not.
So there, is my understanding from what Mr. Warner said, that there is already an approved, what, a site plan, a proposal? I'm not sure what it is for, for some multifamily units on there.
There's an approved site plan that would allow 34 beds on the same site with no affordable housing. And the opportunity we have is, we can provide the 10% affordable housing, go for the density, the expedency with, which is the 50% AMI, and achieve 200 beds. Currently, there are eight students living in that apartment.
Okay, so the answer to my question actually was yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I'm going to vote for the denial.
Michael, do you have any questions?
So, and I do just want to provide a correction. In our zoning ordinance, you would not have the option to build onsite affordable units, which I think is, I don't know, because you're within .5 miles of the University of Virginia. That's the new zoning, so that statement was just inaccurate. The only question I have is, you know, you've, you've provided a theoretical amount of units. Is there any financial plan? Is there any looking at actual site conditions in terms of setbacks that would be required, infrastructure issues, as well as like any financial analysis of whether that building pencils out?
That, that would all have to be done. What, what the applicant has done is similar to what the city did in response to Judge Worrell's order, an analysis back of the envelope with the bulk and area restrictions that we have, applying it to a four-tenths of an acre site. This is the envelope that you can come up with, and that gives you, it's not hard to do that mathematical calculation. That is not engineering, as you point out. That is not cost or feasibility. What we have to do is rely upon free market forces to determine whether a 200-unit apartment project has more financial feasibility than a 34-unit apartment.
And I'm, it sounds like you didn't do any analysis of what you could build under the new zoning while preserving the old structure, because that previous COA clearly shows lots large enough to build a fairly large structure on, throughout the lot while preserving it. And I'm assuming you didn't do an analysis of what you could do under the old zoning, keeping that same layout?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions, and I know we have another very big item to get to, so I will agree in saying, like Brian, you know, I will plan to uphold the BAR's decision as well.
So, the reason why I asked earlier about whether or not the 2023 project was related to your clients or a different one was because I was wondering about the math on that. You said that that, that project would have had 34 bedrooms, is that correct?
Correct.
So, the difference between 34 and 212 is quite significant. If the 34-bedroom house, or bedroom apartment complex would have penciled out, maybe we would have seen it happen by now, and it would have made a tiny dent. 212 beds, if that's the theoretical maximum we can fit under our current zoning code, makes a signi-, more significant dent. I'm struggling whether, I'm deciding whether or not I want to pontificate a little bit about our, kind of, the things we're hearing tonight are a little bit at cross purposes, where we are advocating for more housing, we're also advocating to prevent housing from getting built, often from the same, we're hearing that from the same folks. There's no way to meet the emergency of our housing crisis without trying to build as much housing as we possibly can. The, and being enthusiastic about that, and, and not thinking we can relegate it to certain areas or not. It has to be citywide to meet the need, to meet the moment. And I have a longer, I have a longer speech that if I was a, still a citizen, I would have made it at the, at the lectern. But, okay, I'm gonna, I have the time, we have the time, we're here for this. We acknowledge the need for student housing, we acknowledge the need for housing in general, but we want to preserve an old single house that houses eight people on Wortland, we want to preserve a parking lot on West Main Street. That project has some room to improve, I'm not saying it doesn't, but right now, that's a parking lot. We've had community feedback along the same vein when the VERV and 2117 Ivy projects were being introduced. People didn't want those to happen. We've heard that since students are transient, they shouldn't get the same consideration as long-term residents, but while a single student may only spend a short time in Charlottesville, students in general are always going to be here and always going to need a place to stay. That demand is not transient. If the university expands enrollment, it is better for both the students and the surrounding neighborhoods if that student housing is as concentrated as possible, so that they're not bleeding out into the single-family homes, into the neighborhoods that can be turned into duplexes or accessory dwelling units, or that missing middle that we need. If we concentrate them close to the university, that space is still available. So if we don't want housing in these locations close to grounds, where is it going to be okay? Those kids need to go somewhere. I have been to the houses on Wortland. They're not glamorous historic buildings. The floors are sticky, the windows are broken. It's, it's different, it's not a destination you go to on a walking tour of historical buildings. So we hear calls for more publicly financed housing, I support that. We hear calls for builders to subsidize renters, I support that. We hear calls for sensitive building, for working with the communities, absolutely, I support that. But we also need just support for rampant and abundant supply, apartments, townhouses, accessory dwelling units, duplexes, whatever, we need all of that. The city and our budget can't unilaterally, we can't unilaterally force private developers to set arbitrarily low rental rates and expect to see enough get built. We can't say, you have to build everything and it has to be affordable. No one's going to fund that, no one's going to pay for that. There's not enough government subsidies, especially in our current administration, to help bridge that gap. Our entire budget from Charlottesville City could go every year towards just housing, and we would still need more homes to meet demand and to lower individual costs. Allowing private developers to contribute to local supply takes this financial burden off the city and allows us to raise revenue via property taxes and affordable housing contributions. For example, the proposal on West Main would gener-, currently, that parking lot generates about $66,000 in revenue for property taxes for the city. If there's an apartment complex there, I'm not saying exactly the one that is proposed, but some kind of housing, that could be up to $1 million a year. That would be the equivalent of raising the entire city's tax rate by a penny. So, in addition to providing about half of our annual affordable housing contribute budget, which we allow for about $10,000, that one apartment complex could contribute between three and five and a half million dollars towards that. That money then can be spent locally for maximum impact, like the reconstruction of West Haven that's being planned, like the Kendallwood, Sixth Street, South First Street projects that are already underway, preservation of other affordable housing via AIP and CISRAP funds, and tax abatement for qualified citizens. It is an inescapable economic fact that the city cannot provide all of that money, so we need outside development. New buildings ease the tax and rental burden on everyone. New housing makes it cheaper for everyone. Even if you are a renter, you are still contributing to the tax payments of your landlords. Simultaneously, we're having this conversation about homelessness in our community. The solution to homelessness is not making it more difficult to be homeless. We know that, we've heard that. The difficulty of living on the streets isn't why people get out of homelessness, it's resources like money and housing, and money goes a lot further if there is more housing, which is another inescapable economic fact. Buildings take up space, and that is good for the people who need to live and work inside that space. It can be surprising to those on the outside or are used to a familiar skyline. We've heard San Francisco cited as a cautionary tale of what happens when you don't criminalize homeless folks in the area. However, I take a different lesson from San Francisco, which has roughly the same skyline in most of the peninsula that it did when my mother grew up there in the 50s and 60s. The skyline is the same because they haven't allowed new housing to be built to meet those demands. When new housing is prevented, while the population naturally continues to grow, homes are scarce and therefore more expensive, and some people are left out on the streets. Do we want Charlottesville to become the land of $3 million for a normal, regular house like it is in California? No. In order to prevent homelessness, in order to prevent people having to be displaced to the surrounding counties and to give people more chances in life, we have to allow new housing, some of which will be bigger than before, and we can't be meek about buildings taking up space. With more space inside, then more people can be on the inside. With more space on the inside, there's more choice and competition between landlords, so prices can stabilize and drop. We are not used to seeing change because there hasn't been enough built to meet demands in a lot of our adult memories. There were building booms in the 20th century, the scale of which we haven't seen in decades. There's a reason why so many of the homes in Charlottesville are built between 1910, 1920, and then again in the 50s, when the building booms were happening. We didn't run out of space after that. Instead, the city both limited options with restrictive downzoning, which prevented multifamily homes and mixed-use commercial, and tore down homes, most notably in Vinegar Hill and the Preston Corridor. When I hear the terms breaking up massing or step backs, those sound scared, like we're in denial about buildings taking up space. An unarticulated facade with some ornamentation has served folks well for hundreds of years, including here in Charlottesville. Just look at the Monticello Hotel, the Wells Fargo Building on the Mall, the old Martha Jeff. That being said, we can differ on taste, and we can urge developers to behave with community conscientiousness, but if we truly want to build affordable housing, to build any housing, to prevent displacement, to meet the housing and budgetary needs of our community, then we have to be enthusiastic about new homes being built. And for that reason, I know this is addressing some issues that are in this exact item and some other ones that'll come up later, I would move that we can allow the COA.
So we now going to hear from, yeah, the BAR chair.
That was a motion.
So, we weren't ready for a motion.
Sorry, that was not a motion.
Well, yeah, it's entirely up to you all, I guess.
Not a motion. Just that I, like you and you said.
Good evening, everybody. I'm James Zimer, I'm the Chair of the Board of Architectural Review, and we are charged, as Jeff always often reminds us, with kind of implementing and y'all's guidelines, the city, city historic preservation guidelines, our city council's guidelines. So those are, that's our charge, that's what we're asked to do. And that's what we did. We voted unanimously, seven to zero, to deny the demolition of the Wurttenbacher House. I think that, you know, it is, to some degree, it is an anchor building in this particular district. It's on Wortland Street, right? It's the Wurttenbacher House, it's the Wortland Street District, it's all named after Mr. Wurttenbacher. He was, as previously mentioned, appointed by Thomas Jefferson as the first librarian at the university. As I said during the VAR meeting, the UVA was built with what Jefferson called his Temple of Knowledge as the rotunda's at Central Building, at a time when most universities had a chapel as their central building. This is because Jefferson was a very strong proponent of religious freedom and the separation of church and state. And so, in a sense, this is, this house is the house of his chief priest, if you will, as the librarian. And I think that, at a time in this country when education's under attack, when libraries are under attack, it's a, it's a good thing to support the preservation of the home of a very important librarian to this community. I also think that the, the COA that we did approve in 2000, was it '23? To me, that was a compromise, right? That was a way for us to achieve some more housing and also achieve preservation. Ms. Keller's here tonight, she came out and actually spoke against that project at that time because it was encroaching on the Wurttenbacher House. And I feel like we wrestled with it and worked with the applicant to, yes, scooch the building back a little bit to respect the historic house, but are, we're also willing to allow for growth and adding a building on that historic site. The historic house doesn't meet the setbacks Mr. Blair was talking about because it was the first house built, so there's no setbacks to meet on that street, right? So, but, to me, that's, that was, the, the application in 2023, I felt was a really good way to compromise and preserve both preservation in the city and also allow for some growth. You know, it, as we've mentioned and heard tonight, it's one of the oldest houses in all of Charlottesville, and from our guidelines, once a house is gone, it's gone forever, and we're never going to be able to study it again. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
From the city council?
No, Mr. Hall is for council.
I had a, a job a couple of years ago downtown that included two historic homes on, on site, and they wanted to name some things in the building after the, the folks who owned those homes. And I just had a sense that a house built in that long ago probably wouldn't have a rosy past. And so I looked into the names of the folks that they wanted to, to credit, and one of them was a Confederate officer who fought for the South and died at Chancellorsville, and the other one was the doctor who declared Carrie Buck feeble-minded that led to the Buck v. Bell 1927 case that turned into the Eugenics Policy of the United States. So, I brought those to the attention of the team, and they decided, you're right, we probably shouldn't name things after those folks. So, yes, this is a historic property. To me, that's not enough to outweigh the needs of the future. The, the, you know, this, this point is relevant, too.
That's right, that, those people lived there, too.
Yeah, so calling, the fact that it's named, the street is named after him, that's, that's not, to me, that's not as relevant as the fact that we are in a housing crisis.
So, are we at a point where one of us could make a, offer a motion?
Well, before we do, I want to get the city attorney just to give us some guidance on it.
Certainly, and actually, Mr. Wurtten did a very nice job of laying out the criteria that you all are required to consider. As, as we said, you are allowed to consider matters outside the four corners of the application, and more matters than the BAR consider. But I would like, urge you to, and if you're going to deny this, you do need to take a close look at the criteria that Mr. Wurtten laid out, and make sure that you're making specific findings out of those criteria. That would be helpful on review because as, as we laid out, there is a further right of appeal to the circuit court, and there are other issues behind you, so it's important to get your findings correct in a case like this.
So, can we bring those, that criteria, was that one of your slides, Jeff? Was that one of your slides, Jeff? Just to, because if we're going to make a, a motion to support it or deny it, we want to list the reasons for, if we deny it.
Well, we're not planning to list reasons tonight, right? We're, we've got a motion in front of us, a resolution to either accept or, and the content of the resolution is what we're voting on. I'm a little confused as.
I, I think part of what Mr. Maddox's memorandum to us was saying was that we shouldn't simply rely on the resolution to provide the reasons, but we should discuss those reasons.
That's correct. The, the language in this code that we're referencing here sets that the council will consider the written appeal, the criteria set forth within this section is applicable, and any other information factors or opinions that deems relevant to the application. And so if you are going to deny, I suggest you have a showing that these factors were considered.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to support it because of the age of it and that we have a proposal that has been approved that shows that we can keep the residents and, and also have some, some units there. I respect the BAR's discussion of it. They are more inclined to know the details of this, but I have read it, and I didn't see anything that would make me change that, my, my position on it.
If I may, it wasn't an either/or. I'm simply noting that in 2023, the BAR approved a request, and that was under the prior zoning and was allowed. I, I don't know if you took that same, I don't know if you took that same footprint and went higher. I can't comment on that, but I just want to make clear that the, what was approved in 2023 isn't like what must happen. It's not an either/or.
Well, I would, I would agree with what the mayor said in terms of, I think, clearly meets the BAR criteria. I would just say briefly, I think, you know, that COA to me is interesting because to me, it's a perfect demonstration that we can do two things at once. And to me, the principle of it is a very good model because the height on that could go up, but you can build higher dense growth while preserving history, which I think is a public good, and it is something that people of all income levels can experience. And there's something different about being able to be, be in a building, touch history. And I'll also just say, a lot of people, eyes probably roll back in the back of their head during this whole conversation because it's like, what is this relevant to anything? I'll just say, I mean, the principle of how we treat historic preservation in BAR will impact every neighborhood. Does it impact how, is it worth preserving homes owned by John West, a prominent black business owner during segregation? Is it worth the BAR having the power to, the actual power to reduce heightened setbacks to avoid a project shadowing over West Haven and not integrating their plans to reconnect with West Main? The principle of it matters a lot, and I think we can do both, getting change while acknowledging the importance of those things. But in any case, I will make a motion to deny the certificate of appropriateness for demolition of the structure at 1301 Wurtland Street. Second.
And Mr. Mayor, if I just, I haven't sort of talked a little bit about my reasoning, but I'd like to put it on the record as well. The first point I would like to make is that while I recognize that in our new zoning ordinance, we did express a desire to increase housing in all neighborhoods, that did not mean increase housing on all properties. And clearly, the only way we can hold both historic preservation and increasing housing in any kind of tension is to recognize that there will be somehow, some properties where historic preservation wins out and some properties where the need for more housing wins out. This is a case where I believe that the need for preserving the historic nature of the Wurtland Becker House wins out. And I would also note that we, we've got already in motion, already under development, I don't know, something a thousand different, a thousand units of student housing within a couple of, within probably a quarter of a mile or a third of a mile between the Verve, between the building on 2005 JPA, the building that's going in at Massey Road, Alderman and Ivy Road, and not even, not even getting to the issue of what's happening on West Main Street. So those are, those are apartments that are intended for students. They are not intended for other people other than students, whereas, and, and this would be another instance of we're built, we're looking, we're being asked to approve housing for students, not for families. We haven't done a very good job of increasing the supply of housing for families, and that's something that I think we need to keep in mind as well. So as I look at all of the various factors, and the age of the structure of the property is certainly one of them, the fact that it's a contributing structure in a historic registry, a register of historic places, the fact that it's associated with a historic person, the fact that it has a fairly unique architectural style, and is a fairly good example of it, from what I understand. And I'll also say, by the way, I rely on the BAR to bring better judgment on architecture and architectural history and historic preservation than I possess, and I will rely on them for that. Granted, the, the ordinance requires that we, even if we accept their expertise in those areas, that we consider whether there are other factors we have to balance. I don't find that there are any other factors that, that balance against that successfully. It was accurately noted that any historic district is the sum of its parts. If we mean anything by this historic district at all, we need to preserve that, probably the, it's sometimes been called the anchor of, of the district. And finally, I, I note that when we start talking about perhaps putting 200 units on there, we don't have a plan. We don't have a, a budget. We don't have a pro forma. We don't have any way of knowing whether it would actually fit on the property. So it's very hard for me to credit that for very much. So I will be joining the motion.
Is that a second?
If it hasn't, I thought it was seconded.
Okay, never mind.
But I will be joining in the motion.
Ms. Matt?
I have a brief, just note, which is, I, I recently spoke with a, a client who's a student at University of Virginia who lives off of Little High Street. When they can't find housing close enough to the school, they take a single-family house in a neighborhood. That's happening already. So just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Mr. Maddox, is this justification, is that enough? Should we discuss it further?
I, I think if you have, you've considered the factors, you're, you're voting on it based on the BAR's take on it, I think the, you've had a lot of reasons here. I think you've done a nice job of laying out the reasons why you are denying.
Thank you. It's been moving properly second. Are we prepared to vote further? Is there any further discussion? If not, can we vote, please?
Recommend denial is a yes, just to be clear.
Correct. The resolution is for, is the resolution for denial.
Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear.
The next item on the agenda is a motion to support City of Charlottesville efforts to become a B-City USA locality. Mr. Gaines, Urban Forester, will speak on this. I guess it's Chris is going to speak on it.
They're both here.
Okay, if you can quietly leave the room, that'd be great.
Is this one working?
Yes.
Okay.
That one is too, if you get close enough to it.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff in attendance this evening. My name is Chris Gensick. I'm the Parks and Trails Planner for the City of Charlottesville. The issue before you that was brought to the City Parks Department about a year ago, there's a group of a garden club who noticed there was a thing called B-City USA, which is much like Tree City USA, which is something I did 15 years ago or so. This program rewards and designates communities as bee-friendly. It's effectively like pollinator-friendly with flowers, lowered use of pesticides, and working to make sure that our codes and policies keep in alignment with the goal of preserving honeybees and other pollinating birds and insects such as that. So the resolution tonight would be to allow staff to sign a memorandum of understanding and agreement with the ZIRCI Society, which is basically B-City USA. The things that are in the, the request of the memorandum of understanding are things that we already mostly do. We have an IPM program, we've had it for many years, to reduce our use of pesticides to the extent possible while still managing our public lands and trees. We already have planted pollinator areas on certain parks. River View Power Line is one of them. We're looking to do John Water Parkway soon and others. We've been putting native plants in our parks for many, many years. So the staff here, the only impacted staff would be, Mr. Gaines would be our representative on their committee. The group would actually run their own committee. This is not, this would not be a new city committee, so there would be an outside groups committee that we have representation on. And we would support becoming a B-City USA. We would get signs and advice from the B-City people to tell us how to improve even more on what we already do within the Parks Department. I would, if it's allowable, there are representatives here from the B-City group locally that would like to say a few words.
Okay, yes.
Thank you so much for your time. And actually, it was nice of you to go ahead and give a nice synopsis of, of what we're doing. But what it is, I'm a member of the Rybana Garden Club, and the Rybana Garden Club, the Charlottesville Garden Club, and the Albemarle Garden Club are working in tandem to, to hopefully allow Charlottesville to be a B-city. There are a number of other cities, you know, around Virginia that are also B-cities, but I think it's just, it would be a great educational thing. And then also just, you know, without pollinators, your food, I mean, our, you know, what we eat relies on pollinators, and there's a declining population of bees. It's not just the honeybees, actually. It's, there's so many varieties of bees and insects and so forth. So it would not be a financial, you know, obligation for the city. The three, the three clubs would take on the cost, and the costs are not large. And also, it's something that you can look at year to year. So if for some reason the city doesn't like what it's doing, then you just don't have to do it. So there's really, there's not, you know, there's not much that you're put at risk with. And again, there are, there are a number of other, I was going to mention to you, University of Virginia is a B-campus. JMU, Randolph College, Roanoke College, University of Richmond, Virginia Tech, and Virginia Western Community College are all B-c campuses. And the cities are Ashland, City of Fredericksburg, Danville, Focu, Focuere County, Gloucester County, Hampton, Lynchburg, Manassas, Martinsville, Newport News, Richmond, Ridgeway, Roanoke, Scottsville, Vienna, Virginia Beach, Winchester, and Woodstock. That's it. And do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Question for the city, really. There's no, like, doing B-city doesn't mean, there's no limiting factors that then could be applied to future developments of any kind because.
No, there's no legal tact to this. It is similar to Tree City, like, hey, we recognize you're already doing good stuff. Keep doing good stuff.
We like the bees.
We'll promote it, and you do stuff. So no, the, Steve attending their, whatever it might be, quarterly meeting is, is it, they don't have any legal oversight on what we do in parks. And I think to the point, if we ever decided this is a one-year renewal thing, we could stop doing it. If it turns out anything did pop up, but we don't see anything in here that would be binding in that sense.
And April Wemberly, who is legal counsel, so she, she did approve it on the, she, the memorandum of understanding, she approved the legality of that document. So.
Other questions or comments on this? Just one reading or two?
And I believe the reading would, would allow staff to sign, unless we already have signed it. We're just making sure council approves.
I think it's a single reading. I'm happy to make the motion. I would move the resolution that, resolution of support for the City of Charlottesville effort in becoming a B-City USA locality.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, can we vote? All right. Thank you.
And this is a single reading?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll coordinate with your group and Mr. Saunders on a signing, and if we wanted to do a picture or something, I think tonight's a busy night.
Fantastic.
We might do that another time outside in a park.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance on camping and storage on city property. The Chief, Chief Kochis will present this.
Right over here. Chief, chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager. So as part of our ongoing conversation on the topic of drafting a camping and storage of public, uh, storage of personal property, I'm here this evening to present the first of two readings of the draft ordinance related to camping and the storage of personal property on city property and in public rights away. This process began on April 3rd, 2025, during our 2-2-1s where I met with each one of you, where we discussed concerns around encampments in public spaces and reviewed examples from other localities, including Roanoke's ordinance focused on its business district. And when we spoke during those 2-2-1s, we talked about that ordinance being specific to their business district, and the consensus was that if we were going to do such an ordinance, it should probably be more citywide and not just focused on one specific area. And I'll get into more of the timeline and more detail in my presentation. But I want to begin by acknowledging the many emails, phone calls, and in-person conversations that both I and I know each of you have received on this issue over the past year or more. The perspective we heard comes from all sides, and they reflect just how complex, emotional this topic is for our community. The reality is that long-term solutions need to center on housing. I recognize the commitment this council has shown in working towards that goal. And at the same time, I've spent many hours over the years meeting with, listening to members of our unhoused community. These are overwhelmingly great people who want the same basic dignity and stability we all do. Many have shared with me that they understand and even welcome reasonable rules. What we often see, however, is that a smaller number of unsafe and hazardous encampments create the greatest challenges and cause harm to others. Tonight, what I am presenting is a legal framework designed to help us respond to those unsafe and hazardous situations with clarity and consistency. We owe it to our unhoused neighbors to ensure their safety just as much we do for our housed neighbors. We owe it to our business community. We are directly affected by unsafe encampments. And we owe it to our entire city to approach this issue with compassion, fairness, and responsibility. And so with that, we'll start, there we go, the timeline. So this process, like I said, began on April 3rd, 2025, during my 2-2-1s with each of you, where concerns about these encampments and their impact on quality of life were raised. Since then, or at that time, I was instructed to begin the process of drafting an ordinance. And just to be, just to be clear, there is a lot of conversation around the executive order that came out in July, and I would agree, that's not helpful, as are most executive orders we're seeing these days. But I'll digress when we talk about these executive orders. Once, once we were instructed to begin that process of drafting that ordinance, we developed an internal working group. That working group consisted of the city, members of the city attorney's office, the Commonwealth attorney's office, the deputy city manager for social equity, human services, and the police department. And then we met during 2-2-1s on July 31st and August 1st. I updated each of you on the, on the draft ordinance, and it was placed on the agenda for tonight. Just to be clear, the housing, I mean, ordinances, this ordinance does not replace our housing goals. I think we've been very, this council's been very clear on that. It, it exists alongside our housing initiatives, and ultimately... It, it exists alongside our housing initiatives, and ultimately, housing is a solution. The ordinance simply is about safety and health measures that we consistently see around large, specifically, large encampments. I think it's important to know the, the difference between ordinance and SOP, the standard operating procedures. The standing operator, operating procedures lays out how we operate within that ordinance. That's important. Priority will be given to immediate hazards or obstructions. So, in the SOP, if there is an immediate hazard or obstruction, an advance notice is not required. The removal should happen within 24 hours. If people are present, notification of law enforcement and outreach staff should, should happen. We should post notice if possible, and then remove and store personal property. We will then photograph and document the site along with what was removed. So, how we report and inspect these encampments, any encampment shall be reported to the deputy city manager for social equity. The site will be logged and assigned to a designated city personnel for inspection. Nonprofit partners may assist with outreach during this inspection. And if safety is a concern, law enforcement may attend those inspections. And then, the designated city personnel must also verify whether the encampment is on city property. So, like I said, prioritizing sites. First and foremost, safety risks, traffic slopes, fire. Free Bridge is a good example. The gentleman that was speaking here earlier, and I've heard this from other folks who were staying under the bridge, actually asked me at one point if there could be an alarm put on the dam, so when they open it to release water or release pressure, they could warn them. Because when they did that, the water rose so quickly, it would wash them or their belongings away. It was a clear danger. Stuff like that would be a priority. Obviously, reports of criminal activity would be investigated, trash and health issues, site conditions or complaints, and then interference with scheduled city work. For instance, we have, we're looking at hiring a group called Block by Block, where they go, like, down the mall, almost like ambassadors, and clean the mall. The challenge with that, if there are folks who are on the mall with a lot of belongings, we have no legal framework for them to move. They're just going to be cleaning around all their belongings and stuff, and the, the cameras that are there. And then, obviously, the size and environmental damage that, that would be done would also be a consideration. If the site's not an immediate hazard, so we would post a 10-day business, a 10-business-day notice with the date of the posting and scheduled removal, warning that trash and hazards will be discarded, how to claim stored property, notice that unclaimed property may be destroyed after 60 days, and contact info for service providers. We would post this in multiple locations, so the folks would know that, that we were coming back, and they had 10 days to move their stuff. We would also provide oral notice if possible, hopefully finding the person that was staying there and letting them know in person. And then, if the removal is delayed, we would repost that notice as well. Outreach, so we would arrange at least one outreach visit between posting notice and cleanup, and then outreach staff should be present during that cleanup when possible. Free Bridge was, was another good example. Our nonprofit partners were out there for weeks prior to us going out there, doing tremendous work, working with the folks who were underneath there to try to get them to services.
Please, let them present.
Okay, so cleanup and resolution. So, law enforcement may be present if needed during a cleanup. Give a final, we will give a final warning before removing people or items. We'll separate personal property from trash. Weapons should be reported to, to law enforcement. Contaminated personal property may be discarded and stored property as described in Section 11. And then, we will clean the site and consider deterrents to prevent return from, of camping in the area. And then, we'll document the cleanup with notes and photographs. So, so, so the storage.
Please, please.
So, the storage of personal property. So, we will store, store property unless it's hazard or ruined. We'll keep records identifying where these items are, and we'll dispose of any, any unclaimed items after 60 days. And it should be noted, currently what we do, if folks want to, if folks want to store their items, which many do, when they, they have a lot of stuff, we have a container, the city has a container near Salvation Army, that we will store their items, tag it, and they can come to the police department at any time when they want to get it, and we'll go out and retrieve it for them. We've been doing that for a little over a year now. Returning property, so we would meet with individuals who claim, to claim, who want to claim their stored property. No ID is required unless there's some type of dispute over ownership. And then, we'll release the property unless someone else claims it, and then contact the city attorney. And the storage is free, just like it is now. There's no charge for storing.
Mr. Hall, please.
All right, so what, what this ordinance does and what it doesn't do, and what, and what it does not do, so this does not solve homelessness, clearly. It prohibits camping, what it does do, it prohibits camping and storage of personal property and public rights away. You could go through these and see, but there's a few things I want to hit on this. The class four misdemeanor. So, I spoke with Joe Potania, our elected Commonwealth attorney, about what happens if someone doesn't pay a fine? Is there a capias issued, or they, could they, a warrant be issued? His response was, no. A class four misdemeanor, a capias will be issued. But what would happen is there could be, those fines could gain interest, and that could be a problem, obviously, if somebody wanted to pay one back, pay it back. But the capias is and warrants are not issued for unpaid fines.
John, Mr. Hall.
The, the other piece I wanted to, to bring up as well, and Counselor Austin, you had asked this during our, the April 3rd, I'm sorry, the August 1st meeting when we met on this, about what happens when a class four misdemeanor prevents somebody from getting a housing voucher in the city of Charlottesville, like, through CRHA or something like that. I talked to John Sales about that, and he said, no, it would not. So, counsel, as you, as you consider, as you consider this very difficult topic, there's pros and cons to it. And ultimately, you will listen to the community, listen to all the stakeholders involved in this, and make your decision, whatever that may be. I wanted to just lay these out to you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Could you go back, please? Could you go back one screen forward?
Did you write this ordinance? You want to admit it?
Truth tell. So, did you write?
I can't read it.
Can you go forward, please? Okay, thank you.
So, Michael, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. I mean, one of the questions, when I look at the enabling state legislation that's referenced in the policy brief, this is based on a number of state laws. One is, I'm trying to find the direct language to quote it. Upon the giving of such person of his written promise to appear at such time and place, the officer shall forthwith release him from custody. However, if any such person shall fail or refuse to discontinue the unlawful act, the officer may proceed according to the provisions of 19 dash 2 slash 82 to arrest the individual. And in addition, in another, one of the enabling state legislative ordinances, missed, class four misdemeanors are carved out explicitly that a judge can still order to be someone, someone to be arrested. In addition, that $250 fine can apply for every single day.
It could, yeah. So, those are kind of. The fines, the fines definitely can accrue. And to your point about failing to discontinue unlawful act, that's correct. They would be, be brought before a magistrate, where a magistrate would issue a magistrate's summons typically.
Right. So, I guess, you know, reading that enabling state legislation, would it be, it would be accurate to say, based on the discretion of an officer, someone still could be arrested?
Only, only if they discontinue the unlawful act.
If they, if they don't discontinue.
Correct. So, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, if that, if it's helpful. So, if an officer goes and said, okay, you, this is, the encampment falls within the ordinance, need to move, and they just simply refuse to do so, they then could be arrested and taken in front of a magistrate, and a magistrate's summons would then be issued.
Right. No, I, I hear that, but, you know, it's, it's easy to see how a foreseeable circumstance could happen where someone does end up arrested, you know, if someone just refuses to leave, you know, encampment. The other element, you know, with the $250 fines accruing each day, someone has been doing that act, and I believe in the, at least in the state enabling legislation, it could even go retroactively, if you were able to provide documented proof that someone was there for, say, a month. There's no limit on the total amount. I mean, what, what is, how does this work in practice in terms of discretion of officers, in terms of deciding how many days or the size of the fine?
So, the officers don't decide the size, the size of the fine, that would be decided by a judge.
Okay. The other question is, we've, you know, we've received some legal analyses that, obviously, Grants Pass Supreme Court decision strongly limited Eighth Amendment rights for homeless individuals, but there's still, you know, concerns around seizure of property without due process, disparate impact in terms of how an ordinance is applied that Grants Pass does not address. In addition, you know, I wonder if there's equal protection issues when, in the standard operating procedures, we're saying that we're going to apply the ordinance differently to different populations of people. All, all of which is to say, I mean, the city has lost very high-profile cases around homelessness issues on constitutional grounds in the past. To me, it seems like this, I mean, has there been any analysis of how this withholds constitutional muster? And I would imagine we will be met with a lawsuit.
So, I think that gives me an opportunity to answer the one question from the crowd earlier. So, and I've spoken to the city attorney, so the city attorney's office wrote this ordinance. They could probably answer the question as to the constitutionality of this better than I could.
So, so anytime we get asked to draft an ordinance, we do so, and that is what we did in this case. We wrote an ordinance that we do feel would pass constitutional muster.
John.
Given that it, talking to me or to him.
I mean, this, John.
Grants Pass, Grants Pass is not, is, you know, it dealt with a very specific case coming out of the Ninth Circuit, and it is binding law. We're talking about city property, and our ability to regulate city property is broad and wide, and that is what we are doing here with this ordinance. That's, I'm not speaking to the, the policy decision is yours, but as to the constitutionality of it, we have done our very best in our office to draft an ordinance that accords with the council's goals and the requests coming from the police department.
So, who asked for this ordinance?
Michael, do, Michael, do you have any other question? Mr. Fogo, please. Please, don't. Please, gentlemen, please, gentlemen.
We, we appreciate community input. We have to run this meeting by a Robert Rules of Order. There will be a public comment period at the end of our discussion, and it would be helpful if we could have our chance to ask questions first, even though we absolutely hear it.
Michael, you finish your questions and comments, or?
I mean, the other issue, which is obvious, and this is beyond your purview, so I don't know, I guess it's more of a comment or really a question, but is, I mean, the obvious issue is, I mean, the de facto strategy of the city at this point is, when there is an encampment and we start to get emails of a complaint about it, you all end up.
We are called.
You are called.
And we respond.
And you respond.
With no legal.
And that's not your, and that's not your choice. You are, you are not jumping up and down to say, I want to do that.
We are not.
But you, so, the de facto strategy of the city at this point is, encampments are there when we get, once there's enough emails that there's a vague sense that it's an issue, you all end up getting called out there, you ask people to leave, they go to a different location, the process repeats again. And I just don't, I, how does this change that situation? I mean, it adds a layer of criminalization, potential criminalization on top of it, but like, I just, but I know that's beyond your, because, I mean, the fundamental issues, we can go out there with social services providers, but there's no permanent supportive housing or overnight shelter to direct them to. And you've acknowledged that, you know that.
Of course.
But I'm just struggling to see how this plays out beyond just people end up dispersing into woods in the urban ring, and, or people will still make the decision, like, you ask me to move, and there's a threat of criminalization, sure, I'm do it, but, I mean, they're going to end up somewhere else until they get home. I mean, what, what's the practical effectiveness in terms of changing where our status quo is right now? But I know, that's, I know that's far beyond just.
Yeah, I mean, sir, like, and we've spoken about this, all, all of this. I'm not sure it's a good answer, sir. It really isn't. And, and look, this doesn't solve the issue. I will, I will tell you that there's not a meeting or conversation I have with my boss, the city manager, that this isn't something we talk about, whether it be trying to find, find a low barrier shelter, or, you know, trying to find places for people to go that are safer than under a bridge where the water rises quickly. I mean, this is a complex issue, this is one piece of it. But again, that's why, that last slide is pros and cons of it, and at the end of the day, it's, it's this body's decision.
And, you know, to, to answer the community's question, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, the buck stops with city council in terms of where things come from. When the city manager presented his original plan for homelessness, part of it was this as a possible policy. And the decision at that time was, we will not explore this until a permanent year-round shelter actually exists. And I think council, enough of council had a change in perspective that that order of operations should change. So, that's, that's where we ended up. And I think, but I think that's important to say, this is not some unilateral decision from the chief, nor is it a unilateral decision from the city manager or the city attorney. But to that core point, where I still really, really struggle with is, we've had a viable plan to get to a low-barrier year-round shelter that has not materialized for a variety of reasons. That's what we need. I mean, even if this is in place, people will still just move to other areas that will become visible. And I'm not sure what we end up accomplishing passing this before a permanent shelter exists, you know, just at the practical level. Because I just, where are people going to go? And people are going to gravitate towards where services are, where they can walk to community, where they can get food, I mean, even, I, I don't know.
That's correct, sir.
Natalie, do you have any?
Yeah, thanks, Michael, for, for your questions. Covered some of the same bases that I had. I have some thoughts and some questions. One of my questions is, what discussions were had with the local homeless services providers about the creation of the ordinance and the likely outcome of what it would look like?
So, I personally did, well, it was a group, it was a work group that met, that put this ordinance together. I will tell you that Ms. Washington was, the email that she sent, I believe that you sent it today to us, about adding other steps to this work group as between the first reading and the second, and to work and talk through this. I love that idea, and I think we should do just that. But to quick answer your question, if there were none, I will say that, I will say, I will say that these conversations with our nonprofit providers, from what I understand... will say that these conversations with our nonprofit providers, from what I understand, with our deputy city manager, our social equity speaks with them often on this topic.
Okay, but not a direct work group on this?
Not, there has not been a direct work group with our nonprofits about this.
Okay, and we don't currently have, we have our deputy city manager of.
Social equity.
Social equity, I wasn't sure if we're still using. But we don't have, we have open positions for homelessness outreach coordinators and that sort of thing, we don't have anyone in those roles yet.
That's my understanding.
So, the, one of the claims that's made in the policy briefing is the number of homelessness and problems surrounding that have increased lately. But we got info recently, and I, I couldn't remember if this was at the retreat or a regular meeting, that, and I also can't quite remember the year, if it was 2007 or 2017.
Pick counts.
Yeah, the pick count was, and I know pick count.
That was during the two, two ones, I believe.
Okay, pick count data and our ability to acquire that changes slightly, but roughly it had gone from 260 people to 240. It was close, but it was slightly lower now than what it had been at the previous data point.
That was a reference from the community well-being report that was issued by UV ages recently.
Yes, so that to me shows that it's maintained lately. So the timing of it all, to echo Michael's point, is that we don't have any where for people to go yet, and that is something that we've been working on. I know it's been, we've been in conversations with the homeless services providers about that and the community a lot lately, and it is, it is hard to come up with that solution. It's a lot of people who all mean well, but there's a lot of factors that make it hard to make a decision there. At the council retreat, we all kind of said, we're ready to do something. I'm not quite certain that this ordinance was the something, because it is still putting that cart before the horse. We, we, when Grants Pass came out, we had a conversation up here about how that's not the city that we want to be, and so using that as a basis for an ordinance now, a year later, it's not, it's not the right basis for something like this, it doesn't address the problems, and it doesn't address the reality of, the folks still need to go somewhere. So, we had, we had some great emails about the legality of it, we've had a lot of folks expressing concerns about the pleasantness of their walks around, we've had folks expressing concerns about, you know, the health and safety of these, the folks who are living in encampments, all of which are, are valid to those individual people. But I am concerned about the timing of this, I'm concerned about the latitude in, in Clause C, and how this will be applied. Ordinances should have a certain amount of discretion, but this feels like a big discretion. The Clause C says, nothing herein should be construed to limit the discretion of city personnel to engage in outreach or other non-enforcement actions in lieu of citation or arrest. So what are the incentives there to let people go or to provide? It's, I know there's the SOP in place, but there's still, that feels like there's a way to not apply this equally across folks who are outside. And so I would recommend that we either deny this or table this until we have a place where we can send people that is meeting the needs, if not of 100% of the folks that are outside, at least a good majority of them.
Thank you.
Lloyd, do you have any?
Yeah, let me say, I, I think we need to understand the limits of what the Grants Pass decision was. The Grants Pass decision said that in the view of the, of six justices of the Supreme Court, the Grants Pass ordinance was constitutional, it was legal, but the, but it didn't resolve the question that I think we all need to resolve, which is, is it moral, is it ethical, is it practical? And so I've been struck by the answers, by the many, now probably a couple hundred emails that we've received with the six very specific proposals, most of which I agree with, though I would also add Ms. Washington's proposals as well. I, I had not seen anything from you, Ms. Washington, I heard what you said, and I, I was writing it down as fast as I could, but I may not have gotten it all correct. The bottom line, and I said this a month or more ago to, within councils, you know, inner workings and so on, that I thought that if for us to move forward with an ordinance like this would require that we have a plan for where the people would go, where we want them to be, and I don't mean in the, in the Donald Trump sense of jail or whatever, but in terms of, of the housing-first attitude that the city has adopted and has tried to adopt and, and work on over the last few years. And maybe the, maybe the answer is that we authorize a, you know, a campground in a sense that we would be able to, to have porta-potties at, that we would be able to have some water at, that we would be able to, to monitor for whatever safety concerns we may have. And I, I think, by the way, that we need to understand that the, that the impetus for a lot of this has been that there have been some real problems that have come out of these encampments. There was one encampment over near the old English Inn, for example, that when it was, you know, when folks moved on from there, it took a hazmat team to go in and clean up. We had the problem under, the encampment under the bridge, and we noticed that while, while there was an encampment under the bridge, the amount of E. coli bacteria in the Ryvanna River along there went up. Again, attributable to, in that case, probably to a lack of a porta potty or anything else along those lines. So I think there are ways that we can, we can do something, I, I don't intend to propose a detailed plan from here for right now, there are plenty of people who have much more access to the details than I, but I think that we need a plan like that that would say, if we're going to basically move, you know, take the people with the tents, move the, the encampment, so to speak, let's move it to a place that we can monitor, that we can provide water, and we can provide porta-potties, and, and so on. So that's, that's sort of been my, my position on and all along, still my position. As I said, Grants Pass may have solved, or may have answered at least one legal question, but it doesn't answer the, the moral or ethical or practical question of what do we do about the situation? And to me, it is not a, a simple answer, just to take the Trumpian response. We need to have a humanitarian response, but it needs to be an actual response, and not what we've seen over the last year or two, which is, we just kind of hope it, the problem goes away, because it's clear that the problem is larger. We don't have the, if we were to right now commit ourselves to some particular building for an inter, for an indoors kind of an answer, it would be at least a year. There is no way we can make any progress on this in less than a year if we're relying on a building that would either buy, that we would either buy or build. We've got to have some answer. I think the answer is to figure out where we could have a monitored, city-approved, city-monitored campground with, you know, with porta-potties, water, et cetera. And that would also say, and I also, I am not at all convinced that I understand all of the ramifications of this particular ordinance. I didn't actually see it until this weekend, I think, and I didn't, hadn't seen the operating procedures, and I'm not prepared to, to say that I would vote for exactly this ordinance, but I would vote for an ordinance that moved toward this goal as long as it was accompanied in real time, not just a year from now, in real time with another place to go.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy if folks over there would like to associate my face, for whatever reason, with this. I don't think that I ask for any more than anyone else here. In the meetings that we have with staff, we talk about real problems, concerns that we have that are being given to us. You know, it's, I certainly appreciate the outreach, the several hundred emails that we've gotten. We get every week 10, maybe a dozen emails of people walking through, bringing up issues on this common space that we call particularly the downtown mall. I don't think those people are bad people because of the fact that they have concerns about things that they see. I don't think the business community is composed of bad people because they have concerns. I don't think that I'm a bad person because I would like that situation to be better. So that is where I'm coming from. Obviously, I think, well, I would say obvious, you can't take, yeah, it'd be lovely to be able to talk without being interrupted. We, we have rules.
Please, please, let's have order, we're almost done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So as part of the conversations that we have about all kinds of things that we're, we're dealing with, we, we have asked, and as part of our strategic plan, one of the things we have has to do with economic vitality, has to do with what we're doing next summer with, with, with the bicentennial and so forth. And so we have, Mr. Sanders has been working for several years on a plan for the downtown mall, so this, this was, the genesis of this, the genesis of this was, what are ways that we can think about, about how we can help our police officers engage with people in crisis? What are ways that we can provide our police officers the clarity that they need when they're dealing with a situation that is, is very, very difficult? And so that was part of the genesis of this. Just a few more things, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. You know, we've, I've been around here for almost four years, and my time is almost up, I'm sure you all will be glad for that. But I think that I and others have really attempted to vote with our money and our treasure to invest in housing, to invest in the zoning ordinance, I think we've, I certainly been my, my intent, and I would be the very first to agree, and maybe, and I, I think that this has been a helpful thing, even though painful, to help focus the community's thought on the fact that this is something that we really have to address as a whole. What I will say is, in my door knocking last spring, I went all over the city, not to much avail, but I did it anyway, and I spoke with people all over the city, very, very liberal, progressive people, again, throughout the whole city. And what I have observed is that there's a very deep cognitive dissonance within this city. People come tonight, they'll email us with hundreds of emails, and I know that their hearts are in the right place, but when I go meet with people in their front doors, people do not want a shelter in their neighborhood. Now. Okay, I'm, I'm almost done, just a couple more minutes and I'll be done. So, no one wants a shelter in their neighborhood, which is one reason why I, I didn't feel like what was being proposed for Fifeville was fair to Fifeville. Now, ultimately, we've hired this guy down here who does a really fantastic job of, of keeping all the plates spinning, and this guy has come up with an option of Fifeville, and if that doesn't work, he's going to come up with another option, and eventually we'll land on it. And so maybe, at some point, we'll have the money and the votes and everything else lined up to support the options that you find, Sam, and, you know, maybe this whole exercise is a way for the community to really realize that there are many people that are concerned about this topic. Yes, obviously, the lived experience is essential, but the experience of the business community and the people that visit the downtown mall, it is, it is absolutely relevant. Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you, I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, I want to chime in to, to say a few comments on this, this is a very difficult issue, as, I appreciate my colleagues, because many of the questions that you had, I had as well, about, you know, what, what that interaction would look like with the police and the city. And this is a really difficult issue to, to address. No one, as, as we said, want to, know, know a low-barrier shelter, and every place we have proposed it, we have gotten pushback, but I continue to support the location in Fifeville. I believe we, what I'm hearing is that we need to come up with a, a, a location alternative for the residents. This is, as I said, a really difficult issue, because we get concerns from the business owners, which allow us to, to allocate the, over the last several years, 13, 14 million dollars towards affordable housing, to have that strong economic base. We also want to care for our most vulnerable residents, and I, on a daily basis, it's not uncommon for me to, to interact with a person without shelter and to interact with a business owner. I think that's one of the lovely things about this city, that we can have that. I, I work with the Salvation, the Potchum, and, and just interact with unhoused on, on the mall, and as I see them, I give them money. I understand their plight, and I want this to be a place where every resident thrive, and we're trying to address this, and I appreciate all of the input that we have received, and I understand the next steps that we have to take. I, I just, what I'm hearing from council, that this is not ready yet, we need to come up with a, a site, you know, if we're going to say you can't be here, but you can go there. That's what, what I'm hearing, and, and so we're going to continue to work at this. I appreciate everyone's input on this, and, you know, it, this is, Mr. Hall, thank you. Did you have something?
Yeah, but I want you to wrap.
So I would just say that, that, you know, over a particular, the last, and we've received a lot of emails, you know, that, you know, that, you know, put the title criminalizing homelessness, we also received some that say that, you know, some of the issues that they have had with unhoused, but also saying that, you know, I understand that this is a, a difficult issue, and, and it is. This is probably, you know, one of the few times that we've received this many emails, and so we know that, that when we try to address difficult issues, we're going to run into this, and that's why you all have elected us. We're going to hear what, all of the concerns from the business owners to the providers to come up with a, a solution. And likely, it's going to be something that, you know, everyone's not going to be happy with, then, you know, but we're going to do our best as we hear the input. So we're, we're going to do one more round of, of comments, because we, I'm sure some other people still want to, to speak at this.
I just have a brief addition to the conversation, which is, you know, you're, you're taught, growing up to, you know, don't talk about money. Well, up here, we have to talk about money. Money is how we set our priorities, that's what our budget reflects. Part of that is the need to raise money so we can spend it on things. We can't grab dollars out of the air. One of the presentations we got during our council retreat the other week was the fiscal stress level of the city, meaning, how much latitude do we have to do something like raise taxes? And it's not. And it's not, not much. We're at the tippy-top, pretty much, of our fiscal stress capacity, which means the other way to expand our revenue generation is to, well, so that's where, you know, the businesses are relevant. We get sales tax, that funds a lot of our things. Property taxes is where we get the most of our general fund. So if we can expand our revenue by allowing more people to pay those property taxes, so it falls on a broader range of people instead of a smaller range of people, then we can have money to fund things like a really good shelter, like investment in affordable housing vouchers and other things throughout the city, like parks and things that we all enjoy. But we have to keep that in mind moving forward, so we want to pay for good things, right? So we have to raise money in order to pay for those good things. So when we make a decision like this, where we want to make sure we pause this so that we can go ahead and get a homeless shelter, which is going to cost a lot of money, when the time comes to pay for that, we also need support for that. And that can be direct by raising taxes, which we don't want to do, or it can be done by broadening the folks paying for taxes so that it's less of an onus on each individual person. So I just want to point that out because hopefully, we're going to have some solutions shortly, but they are going to cost money, and we need to keep that in mind.
So, Mr. Mayor, are we, at this point, wanting to indefinitely table this ordinance or just somehow strike it? I mean, we're obviously not going to vote for it in two weeks.
Right.
Okay, so what is, what's the, what's the legal move here, Mr. Attorney? How do we deep-six this?
If you want, it's, the agenda is the council, so if you want to not consider it next week, you know, there have, you do not have to, or next meeting, you do not have to. It can be removed from the agenda. It can be tabled.
I guess the public would probably feel more comfortable if there was a way to say that it was.
Someone can move to table it if you want to.
Say again.
Someone can move to table it if you want to.
Okay, I would move that we table this motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on tabling this until?
I'd like to understand what the term "table" means under our procedure.
It can be raised at a, in a future date. It can be just stricken, you can bring it up in any future meeting, just that you can raise anything you like at any future meeting. It's a.
Well, it's one of two readings, but, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
You go ahead.
If I may, what the ordinance says is that no ordinance can become law unless it is first introduced, and then after a period of at least three days, it is then voted on by the council. If you decide that you do not want to take this up at a future meeting, then it is effectively dead.
Okay.
There's, which is to say.
It expires.
We, we don't have to vote on it soon.
And it will not be on the next agenda.
Right. But it doesn't mean no one else can ever bring it up again. There's always that possibility. And that's just the technical, that's just the technical. That is a great question. Would it be a second reading if it's identical?
I think he's saying that it expires.
If this specific measure would need to be raised again and voted on.
As a first reading?
Again, as a, yes.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
I would just say there's been a motion and a second, and I would, we've discussed it a little bit, but, I mean, the core thing, not just city government, but the community has to figure out, is where and how are we going to build a permanent year-round low-barrier shelter and a location for more permanent supportive housing?
Yes.
That location at Fifeville, I, from my understanding, city council's ready to allocate money to support that. But the nonprofit partners, and I don't, I'm not trying to be negative, I don't know all the reasons, have not been able to get to an agreement on running a low-barrier shelter there. Until that changes, there's not going to be a low-barrier shelter unless we find a different location, which will then cost millions of dollars to acquire and then millions of dollars to renovate. We can do that. We have the money and our budget to figure that out, but it would take a lot of time to get off the ground. We've got to figure out a way to get the city together with nonprofits, but I think also private philanthropy groups like Bama Works and others to actually figure out and fund it. Because again, until we, one, we know yes or no whether the Fifeville proposal is completely dead or still possible, and then from there, you know, pick a location, but it's going to take years and millions of dollars. And every budget cycle, it's going to require city council prioritizing that. So, I mean, we've just discussed, I mean, the situation is the same as it was a decade ago in terms of, I mean, we're pretty close in terms of the number of homeless people in our community. We've discussed the need for a low-barrier shelter for well over a decade, and we've never done it. And until we do it, even if we pass this, until we do that, it's not really going to change much.
Yeah. So I want to thank you, Chief, and City Manager, for making this presentation tonight.
Okay, it's been moved and properly, second, thank you, Chief Conches. Further discussion on tabling this?
No. How do we vote?
Initiate it.
So.
Jeff Fogel.
So, Mr.
We, I don't see a thing to vote.
What is your, you can tell me.
Yes, I vote to table it.
And Natalie?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So, Mr. Fogel, I would like to get some people, people who haven't spoke, who haven't spoken yet, to speak.
You mean, you're not allowed to speak a second time?
You are, but we want people.
Okay, so I'm here. You're going to stay until everybody gets to speak, aren't you?
Yes, sir, but it'd be, yes.
Well. The people that you like to speak to, okay?
No, I want to get, you spoke once, sir. Who would like to speak? We're now at the time for second, community members, who would, who would like to speak on, oh.
Ms. Bryant, have a hand up if you're best chance you wouldn't recognize.
Ms. Bryant, would you like to?
I'm not back. Thanks. Yeah, they're closed. Yeah. Good evening, Zionah Bryant, Charlottesville resident. I first just want to say, like, before I go into my official comments, Jen, thank you for running, because, yeah, anyway, hopefully, hopefully it's tabled until Jen gets on. But anyway, I think that today really showed me that the Blue Heart thing, the I Love Seaville, whatever that was, that the Downtown Business Association did after August 12, 2017, meant nothing. How do we know that? Because the Charlottesville that they love so much doesn't include unhoused people. I mean, I think that's pretty clear. And so, I mean, I could do the whole, like, profound comments about how we should be caring for each other, which, there's a place for that, and I feel like everyone has already said that. I'm really saddened by the fact that Mr. Pinkston said, "But." He said, "Community members' voices matter, but the business owners matter," blah, blah, blah. And it's just very clear that there's no room for nuance here. People are picking sides, and unfortunately, there are some councilors who are prioritizing profit over people, and that's very clear. I think it goes without saying that the downtown mall is often dead because we don't need that many trinkets and pottery shops. We need things to do. And I mean that not in disrespectful manner, but I'm saying that when people go downtown for the Tom-Tom Fest, it's because there's actually some entertainment. It's because there's actually something for multicultural, folks who are looking for multicultural fun, to be able to enjoy something. There are go-go bands. When that happens at Fridays after five, you see black people. When they're not there, you don't see them. I don't think it's rocket science. So when we talk about the businesses that we're protecting, let's really think about how black-owned businesses are not able to do well on the downtown mall, and that's not new. And people have said that for decades. In fact, it's been said since before I was even born. And so it's just like, I feel like we continue to talk in circles, but the reality is that you guys or someone, whether it was the City Manager, no one's going to say that they came up with the idea. So, I mean, there's no point in us playing the guessing game. We can kind of assume who had the idea for the whole ordinance to come up, and we can base that off of past things that they've said. But ultimately, the ordinance is a terrible idea. We know that. And it's just very sickening to see how we got back to business as usual. We had so many people in the community begging for civility in these meetings, people not to come and shout or bring signs and protest during the meetings. And as soon as we got back to that business as usual, quiet, quick meetings, things like this happened. Luckily, we had some people who paid attention to make sure that the community came out to speak up tonight, but if we didn't, that ordinance would probably have been approved. So again, thank you, Jen, for running, and I hope to quickly, everyone who supports the unhoused community and supports striking this ordinance, do you mind standing if you're able? It's always good to see the support in the room. And now we know who's on what side. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? No, no, I'm sorry, I'm Wendy, I'm sorry. Which is?
Good afternoon, or well, good evening, good night, because it's been a long time that we've been in here. But my name is Rosia Parker, and y'all claim that, thank you, Mike, thank you, Ms. Orskine. I appreciate that y'all have common sense, and y'all understand what is really needed. I really appreciate that. But being a mother, being homeless for five years with children, living in Charlottesville, coming to Charlottesville, coming to Charlottesville, putting my kids in foster care, foster care loses the paperwork. That's not a happy feeling when you have to fight for your children to get them back, when you're carrying everything that you own on your back, a bag here and there. You got to carry everything with you. There's no way that you can leave them. I understand sixty days, they're discarded after not being claimed. Where do y'all expect the people to put their belongings if they are already being pushed away from sleeping on the streets? Like Mike said, this has been a decade, if not longer. This, I was homeless twenty years ago. I've been here in Charlottesville twenty years. The LV Collective, that big twelve-story building that y'all putting up there, that y'all allowing UVA to come in, make them pay taxes. And not the property taxes, because people that got to pay property taxes, that's a short way of being homeless, too. So, I mean, I understand that these things are needed, but like I say, twenty years? Charlottesville is far behind. What, what did y'all think was going to come? Did y'all, was y'all building for the future? Y'all got that old man money up in here. Y'all should have been using that money. I mean, that little sleep-in that y'all had down at the Jefferson? Do you know what it's like to sleep in a car? Do you know what it's like to sleep on a sidewalk? Imagine going without food, going without washing your tail, going out, going without mental, going with mental health, not knowing where you're coming or going. Didn't y'all see them people that slept out there in front of the city hall building at that bus station? For how long, y'all, snuff? You walked past them for eight years. Y'all all walked past them. Did y'all, was y'all blind? What, did y'all not see? Them people laying out there? This is not new. Conches, I understand, I was out there with you at the park, but still, this is different. This is reality. This is real. And to put them people in jail, half of them during the wintertime commit crimes so they can be in jail, just so they can have somewhere to sleep. But y'all got to come together because it's not about putting them in jail, it's about humanity. It's about life. It's about living. It's about suppressed, oppressed, and depression.
Elaine, and then the gentleman. And then Matthew, I see you, I'm sorry, in the corner over there.
Hello, Mayor and councilors. My name is Elaine Carey. I'm a resident of the city of Charlottesville. I also work at Cultivate Charlottesville. And listening to everything this evening, it's all related, right? We're talking about whether we're building student housing and prioritizing that over keeping buildings, which can have an effect on other places in the city as well, not just at the site that was talked about tonight. The big thing I wanted to be here for was talking about what FAR has been trying to amplify, and that is a new building coming in that would overlook West Haven. We already have the standard, which looks down on the West Haven neighborhood. To put up another building on West Main Street that would look down on the residents of West Haven and the Tenth and Page neighborhood is not what needs to go there. And I heard a lot of talk today about affordable housing, which that term means a lot of different things, and just the need for more housing. And it does really feel like UVA students are being, and sometimes UVA employees as well, are being prioritized over other community members in how we're looking at a lot of different things. But the main thing that I wanted to say tonight is do not, whatever you all can do to keep that from being an eleven- or twelve-story building that looks down on a traditionally black neighborhood, I'm asking you to do that. The only other thing I wanted to say about the downtown mall is, the downtown mall used to be Vinegar Hill. So when people are talking about businesses and who can and who cannot be in that area, that area used to be a thriving black business and community area that was taken by the city. You can say voted upon, you could say that, but that was taken by the city, and those residents were pushed into West Haven and Tenth and Page. So all of these things are connected, and when you all are making these decisions, it shows who the priority is in this town. And it is not the people who look like me and/or people who don't have in this town. It's about, very much on racial lines, and it's very much on class or economic lines as well. So please, 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 do not let them put up another building of students looking down on West Haven, literally and figuratively looking down on West Haven and Tenth and Page. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, you next, sir.
I'm Major Donald Wilson. I'm a new officer at the Salvation Army. I've been here for almost a month now, and I just wanted to share a little bit about the progress of what the Salvation Army is doing at the present time in relation to the need for more shelter, in relation to the current situation and what we perceive as a growing situation. Over forty years ago, Salvation Army built a shelter with fifty-five beds. That's the very same shelter we still have. It hasn't changed one bit. We haven't been able to expand it, we haven't been able to modify it, it's just continued to be in use year-round. We continue to use it, and we plan to expand our current services, to expand at least to overdouble the capacity we have at the present time. We're making progress with that. But one of the good things is, that we've seen in a short period of time, is a great cooperative spirit among nonprofits and other agencies working with us to put together a comprehensive plan as quickly as possible, not only to offer a momentary solution, but a long-term solution. And again, we're working together in good faith, we're working together with the hope that we will continue to find support within the community to deal with this issue. The complexity, the complexity of homelessness is just beyond one agency or one entity, and we need a community to make a difference in the lives of these individuals, not just for sustaining for the moment, but recuperating these lives for our community. So I just wanted to let you know that we're going to continue to work the best we can with what we have, and we're willing to work with all those who are interested in achieving the same goal of bringing people back from that state of instability to stability and hope. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Gillickin, I'm over in Fifeville. I'm one of the co-chairs of Liveable Seaville. I don't have my fastball now at nine fifty-five in the evening, but I want to say a few things. First of all, the way that this proposal came about was incredibly disrespectful to our community. This was a holiday weekend. I spent probably fifteen hours this weekend working on this. I had to do a Zoom call with someone who works in homelessness services area, who was on vacation with their family so that I could understand their perspective on this issue. And it was interesting to find out that I spent more time learning from local homelessness service. service providers what their perspective was on this ordinance than the city had done at all. That's not how we should be doing things around here. We should be going to the experts, who are first and foremost the people experiencing homelessness, we should go to the local service providers and learn and listen. This is not a community, as you know, that lacks for ideas about how to solve problems, okay? So, in the future, let's try to be respectful of the community when we're trying to solve our hard problems by not dropping a total change in the city's approach to addressing homelessness on a holiday weekend. You wouldn't be, have people being quite as snippy with you tonight if we had been given a little more respect, okay? Secondly, I think, I just wanna make sure it's on the record that the only, uh, entity that, or person that voted in favor of this ordinance tonight was the Friends of Downtown. It was everyone else against even the five of you. Um, and I wanna specifically mention a claim that was made that, that those of us who are here, even though we filled up a room, are a vocal minority, uh, in this town and we're just kinda rabble-rousing and creating a fuss when there's actually this silent majority that really wants to criminalize homelessness, but in a nice way, but criminalize homelessness in Charlottesville. Um, that, this is a thing that that crowd, it's a small crowd, says claiming that there are a lot of people that feel differently about this issue, that they're actually okay with pushing homeless people off the downtown mall. That group, that, that entity, that, those people, they don't actually apparently participate in the political process at all, they don't show up at any meetings to speak during public comment, they apparently don't vote in elections either to get candidates into office that will enable their policies, but somehow, they somehow have a, a little way of sticking in the brains of certain elected officials, like, wow, I gotta really consider those folks. It's like five rich guys who paid someone to come speak for them. That's not who we should be listening to. Obviously, we need a thriving business community, but they do not have solutions to this issue. They haven't for decades, they keep doing the same old thing, it's time for something different. One last thing, campground talk, I think I'm interested in that in some ways, there was a campground two years ago that you all shut down in Market Street Park. You didn't want a campground. The same folks here, we said, keep the campground going and you said, no, the business community's upset. So, I'm just saying, just reminding us of our past, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So, you, you ma'am, and then you.
So, I had no plans to speak tonight, um, until just a few minutes ago. Um, so, I've heard a lot of talk this evening about demolition of buildings in our town, I've heard talk about communities that you've gone to that don't want shelters in their communities and also that the businesses of our downtown district are the ones who are pushing to get the homeless people off the street. Why are we not thinking about putting the shelter in the business district where these people can have access to things they need on a daily basis?
Thank you.
Uh, so, I'd like to make a particular point that I think hasn't been brought up too often yet, but will stay relevant because a couple of y'all have mentioned the, the idea that perhaps, oh, sorry, right, Mo Van De Sompel, six oh eight Cavill Avenue, um, this idea that once we sort of have a place to push them, that this could still be like a good idea to be able to do something like this and I kinda wanna make a particular point on that. There's this famous quote that I'm sure you have all heard at some point, that the law in its majestic equality forbids both rich and poor alike to sleep under bridges. This is of course, a snarky joke that's getting at the point that even though laws in principle are applied equally, oftentimes, they have disproportionate impacts. The thing that is really despicable about this law is that it is not even facially being applied equally, right? Like, you go and you like read this legislation and it talks about what is defined as a campsite and so it mentions things like campfires in public areas, the Rivanna Trail has bonfire pits all around it that I see people having campfires in all the time. It talks about the idea of storing public property and yet I see trailers out on the street everywhere, I see UVA students dumping their couches out on the public rights of way. It talks about, um, campsites and yet I see every time that there's a game day, I see tents go up all around Charlottesville on our public rights of way in our parking lots, right? All of these are explicitly, and I, and again, I don't say this as like a gotcha on the law because the law does have in it this extra clause that says, oh, if a reasonable person could surmise that the person is living on that property, that's the thing that kind of makes it all there. But that kinda gives the game away, right? Laws are supposed to make acts illegal, things that you do are made illegal by a law, but having this extra clause on makes it so that like, it doesn't actually matter what the acts are at all because we don't want to harass night, nice white people that are having their bonfire, we just want to be able to like target the specific people of people when they do a thing that we don't like. And you know, you have this like thing in the summary where you talk about it being like, um, you know, that the city is committed to not criminalizing homelessness and that that's shown by the fact that we'd only make it a fourth, uh, level misdemeanor, but this is blatant doublespeak, right? I mean, this is just like literally doublespeak, you are making it a crime to do the things that homeless people have to do to exist, so it's just kind of like blatantly wrong. And so, the actual effect of this policy will be, as Mr. Payne said, to basically just force people into more and more distant locations where they're not visible, right? Into medians on highways where we have some grass set up, uh, unless indeed eventually we get this low barrier shelter, but at that point, we probably will not even have enough beds in that shelter if it ever does get built. And the final thing that I just wanted to point out is that none of the protocols that were like linked that the police chief pointed out, which make the whole thing sound a lot more humane, are binding in any way, right? If an off, like, it's not in the legislation, if an officer ended up breaking that protocol, they would just be able to kind of go away anyway. Um, so, just at, at long last, this law is no law. This is just an excuse to harass people.
Thank you. So, Wendy, before we loop back around, I wanna get everyone that hasn't spoken yet, yes sir?
Uh, Ralph Braun, I live in Rose, I live in Rose because I was evicted in Charlottesville. Hello?
John, please sir.
Hello? Oh, I thought, I thought, I thought I'd see the clock running down. Um, I, I'd like to thank everyone who's spoken against the ordinance, I agree with all those comments. Um, I, I'd like to point out a few things if this comes, if, uh, this comes back from the dead. Um, hope that hopefully will, will, uh, be paid attention to next time. One of them is, uh, I, I would categorize it as candor, accountability and humanity. Uh, candor, no one is happy with this process. I'd have to guess as to why, why this, why the process went the way it was, I hear about the two-to-ones, I've heard, I've heard about those before, why those were utilized, I would have to guess, because one of the reasons they, two-to-ones exist is a loophole in, in Virginia FOIA, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And, I, I'd have to guess, that's probably the reason the two-to-ones were used in this particular case instead of a more normal planning process, but I don't know that. The phrasing of the ordinance lacks candor. It lacks candor as to what the purpose is. You had, you had the woman in the zebra dress earlier, talking all about the downtown mall, the words downtown or mall appear nowhere in the ordinance. Instead, it lists a whole bunch of types of camping and things, I know people live downtown, they move, they move around a lot, that, I don't see people with fires and permanent tents downtown. It lists a whole bunch of things that don't apply downtown at all, so what, what is it going after? Is it about downtown, is it about somewhere else? I suspect the reason, this was not raised on the topic of candor, is that that would then allow all of us to ask questions about the specific issue instead of just pawning off, pawning it off to the police and the prosecutors. Uh, I'll note regarding the ordinances or the state statutes that Mr. Payne brought up earlier, um, fifteen dot two dash twenty eighteen, most class four misdemeanors aren't jailable unless the person refuses to discontinue the act. That's accountability, that, the cops can say anything that, you know, you didn't clean your tent up quickly enough, so I'm gonna arrest you. You, you know, you went there when I told you to go there, so I'm gonna arrest you. There's a lot of paths to jail with that, but, uh, in, in, uh, section twenty eighteen, it's actually worse because this is one of the very few places where there is a specific jail possibility for violating a class four misdemeanor. The only other one I could find in the state code was the drunk tank law. But, one, what, what, what did we learn for, I, I think, it's almost conventional wisdom now, Black Lives Matter was some of fray, it was, what did we learn, what's one thing we took away from that in the long term, is the police as an institution is one of the least accountable in our society. I, I don't know anyone in this room, but I know there are officers on the force who've lied on warrants, there are probably officers on the force who've lied in court. You're asking every bad apple to abide by, as the guy said, a completely non-binding policy to avoid people going to jail. So, I don't know what, I, I don't know what, what the, what the policy was intended to solve and I don't know how the ordinance is written lines up with how it was claimed you wanted to be implemented.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Jessica, you, 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 um, spoke once, so we'll, we'll get you on it next time. You're next, John, okay?
Good evening, uh, Matt Seaton, pastor at Wesley Memorial here in Charlottesville. Uh, our congregation is a member of Impact, uh, which is part of twenty-seven or twenty-six other faith communities here in Charlottesville and in Albemarle County. Wow, I had to change my temper after the decision and so what I'm gonna say is, uh, I think there is some gratitude that, uh, in this moment, this abomination isn't gonna move forward. So, I am grateful for that decision. I'm in this place because of, of Jesus, I follow Jesus and what I have learned from Jesus is that all of the laws and the prophets in the Old Testament are summed up in two things, perhaps you remember from Sunday School, love of God and love of neighbor. That means that law is only just so long as it is rooted in love. And so, I wanna speak to you as God's beloved, though maybe perhaps my enemies at times still God's beloved, but when you entertain such things in the future, ask yourself, is this rooted in love and therefore God's justice for our neighbors? I've already heard a sermon tonight about, whatever you do to the least of these you have done to me, that is, that is straight from my man Jesus. When you think about our unhoused neighbors, ask yourself, would you do this to Christ if he were here tonight? And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
So, what's the point of all this, folks? What we need is needed innovation in political science here, I mean, or maybe we need needed innovation in a solution to the problem. We look back at our history and our common ground, our common ground of how we are formed as people, largely as English people. I think part of the problem here is that, gotta consider population. When we were formed, when we had in seventeen eighty-seven, when we birthed our constitution in the United States by James Madison Committee, what did we have? Well, everybody said, Mr. Ben Franklin, what do we have? A republic if you can keep it, is his answer. And, uh, what is the solution to this? I think about Valley Forge and Fort Necessity and, uh, Tycon de Roga, some of those places that George Washington, forwarding the Delaware, you know, things like that. Those guys froze to death during the winter, when winters were severe, but they all had tents to bib, 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 bibwack in. And, a marine barracks, for example, is a bibwack, you know, way, way of, uh, you know, maybe I'm spending a lot of money here, you know, but I know that there are some churches that will give you free tents, for example. If we go to our parks, like Forest Hills Parks, Penn Park, uh, McIntyre Park, some of the larger parks in town and have the police, kinda police and do a beat and, uh, have some, uh, tents that were issued, I think the city council could afford a few tents and also a Pilates mat for each tent, so if you have the tents on a concrete, uh, or a, an asphalt, uh, parkway, no, I don't mean that, parking lot is what I mean. Now, I went to, uh, I had to kick, kick back, I mean, I've been burning the candle at three different ends. And, uh, I went to Los Angeles, I wanted to see where the moral tone of this country and entertainment, we all love to be couch potatoes and, you know, talk and argue and fuss and fight and everything because we, we mirror what we see on TV and all our football games and everything, we think, oh yeah, I'm gonna be a champion athlete, you're not gonna make it. Cause those guys are cream, at the top of the butter churn, you know?
Thank you.
I'm not through.
Well, I'm sorry, but the three minutes is up. Who else?
Three minutes? Here I am, limited to three minutes. Come on.
Um, yeah, um...
Please sir, please, please sir.
Yeah, I, when we keep talking about, um, the different ideas, like having a designated camping area, I think that's like a fine and well and good idea and it does not put us any closer to this ordinance being okay, it would still be equally as fucked up. And like, I've lived on the street at multiple points in my life and I don't want to go live where everybody else can see me, that's scary. I've had too many people start touching me in my sleep to want to live where a bunch of other people are right there and I don't think that's an appropriate ask and I don't understand who the hell you think you are or who the hell the cops think they are to be like, oh, this is your little field and that's the only field you can be in and then try to call that humanity because that's not humanity, that's fucked up.
Thank you. No, uh, just check to see, make sure.
Do we need names?
Yeah, um, um, next, yes sir. Ma'am, did the sign, did you wanna speak or you just holding up the sign?
I'm holding up the sign.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Aiden Workman, I do work for Impact, I'm not speaking on behalf of Impact. Um, I just wanted to say two quick things in response to some things that y'all said and that the Downtown Business Association said. A couple of y'all mentioned that the Fifeville neighborhood does not want a homeless shelter. I live in Fifeville, I would love to have a homeless shelter near me, I live in walking distance of the shelter, I think it's needed, just wanted to state for the record that the whole community is not against it. Main thing I wanted to say is, I also have a young daughter, we go to the downtown mall all the time, I have never felt unsafe because homeless people are there, I don't think that's why people don't shop at businesses downtown. What is very frustrating as a parent of young children is that it's very hard to find a bathroom when my daughter needs a change of her diaper, there's not a lot of public seating and I think a lot of these are decisions that are made out of wanting to make it harder for homeless people to exist on the downtown mall, rather, those decisions are made by city or business owners. We're making life worse for everyone because we wanna make it worse for some specific people, so, I don't know if the woman who spoke for the business association is still here, but if the business association really is so worried about this decline in people coming to the downtown mall, we might wanna figure out making it more accessible for everyone and if that means that a homeless person might sleep on a bench by your business, that's okay because the main reason I'm not there as often as I would like to be is it's very hard to be there with a little kid because we've tried to make it hard for homeless people, that makes it hard for other people.
So, before we loop back around, is anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? Yes ma'am, in the back row, and then, you, you, Ms., Latisha? Latricia, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Kim, I'm a resident and Pantops and an employee in the city. Um, I'm gonna start by reading a statement from someone who wasn't able to join us today and I realize that the ordinance has already been struck, but I still like to read it anyways. They say, "Experiencing homelessness is not a criminal offense. What is criminal is enforcing an ordinance that criminalizes our most vulnerable neighbors during one of the horrific, during one of the most horrific experiences of their life. To make a decision that enforces this ordinance plays into the right-wing handbook that we are witnessing taking place in DC and further punishes those from merely existing. Humans deserve housing, not threats of criminalization, and humans deserve to receive care without conditions." Um, I'd also like to add my voice to the chorus of folks, um, who are supporting Tenth and Page and West Haven residents and their campaign against the West, the massive student housing development proposed on West Main. Um, if you haven't had a chance to watch that bar meeting that happened a couple weeks, weeks ago, I'd really encourage you to, there's some really compelling testimony from committee members and residents that was... that was really moving, in fact, for the members of bar themselves. Like, you will see members there get emotional hearing the testimony from community members and how that development would impact their lives and, and their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My, my name is Latricia Gowsen. I am the executive director of FAR. But I'm also clearly a resident here of Charlottesville. FAR, the Public Housing Association of Residents. No problem. What I, we've been a little bit everywhere this evening. What I really do want to, of course, stress is we, 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 we say no for the LV development. Like, I understand the bar sent us back. We gotta, we got a lot to, that we gotta do. But I just want to say that because I also do want to address the other issue that I am glad that we did get beyond. But I think one of the connecting threads is the continued level of disrespect by not making residents the center in, in both situations. So we have the developers who came, and they did not even consider residents. They were afterthought. And it was really after the residents came up with their plan. And then they said, oh, that's by the way, this looks like something we might want to jump on. That is disrespectful, especially when we are talking about, as has been brought up here, the legacy of Vinegar Hill and the ways that residents have continued. And we're gonna say particularly residents and community members of color within this community have not been listened to and heard. It does not make sense that there was a community that was literally dug out intentionally, where they were taken from successful businesses, successful families, successful culture, community, all of those things marched to this spot. Now, you already dug it out, and now all of a sudden, generations later, century later, we got, not even centuries, because we ain't that old, but you know what I'm saying. I'm tired, y'all. We have now a developer that says, we want to block you in. They cared more about the plants being surveyed than the people. And so now we're also talking about people who are houseless and that are part of this community or fabric. They live here, and they deserve to be treated as such. And I understand the businesses, but it comes back to something else. It's people over, it's profits, profits over people. That is what I have heard. I know we had the business owner, and I know that those things matter. But we have to really consider when we're talking about affordable housing, and they're all intersecting. We are talking particularly in this matter about luxury student housing. We have community members that work two and three jobs, and I'm a person that has two, three jobs. And I cannot afford to live here. So you're saying that people who are down on their luck right now, possibly, there are people that we know that are houses that work full-time jobs. They're not just people who choose not to. Who chooses that? So as we're talking about making these things, these ordinances, let's bring back compassion because compassion was not thought of when it was written. And I, I am just hoping that as you are going forward in the process, please come and talk to community members. You shouldn't have had any conversations about homelessness, and no one was represented. Like, that, that is disrespectful. And I know I'm down inside. Good night, but thank y'all. Thank you.
Before we double up, I mean, go back around, would anyone else like to speak? No, John? No, I'm gonna, no, John?
I've gotta make this.
No, Mr. Hall, please sit down, sir.
I really do, this.
Mr. Hall?
I gotta get a head start here.
No.
Head start.
So is anyone else like to speak? If not, I'm gonna go with Jeff first, and then Wendy, and then Jessica, okay? Mr. Ford?
Fifteen years ago, the Downtown Business Association came to the city council and said, "We have to got to prohibit panhandling on the downtown mall because we're dying. Nobody will come here because they don't want to see these undesirable people." And the city went along with it. At least we had a city attorney who had the consciousness to say to the city council, that's wrong, and it's probably unconstitutional. It violates people's rights. But a compromise was made, and the compromise was, let's limit the ability to beg on the downtown mall. I litigated that case, as some of you know, for four years, till we got the Court of Appeals and the Fourth Circuit to say, you all and your predecessors violated the First Amendment rights of every single poor person on the downtown mall who was homeless. Now, in the ensuing fifteen years, have we seen the death of the downtown mall? Well, you're all buying into what the, what the business community is saying to you. We can't live like this. People won't come here. They've been coming there the last fifteen years, even though we were able to beat back a retrograde city council who thought property over people was important. Now, under no circumstances, by the way, Mr. Mayor, this is not a complicated issue. What's before you tonight is a very simple issue. The simple issue is, are you gonna characterize people who are homeless as criminals? That's the only issue. Instead, we're wasting our time, our energy. Wonderful, creative people are here. This time could have been spent discussing what the community believes could be done about the problem. But no, we're talking about, well, should we bust them? How badly should we bust them? Should it be a fourth-degree offense or a third? That's all bullshit. Excuse me. That's all bullshit. The bottom line here is a simple matter of humanity. And I urge any of you who think otherwise to simply read the dissenting opinion of Justice Sotomayor. As she started out, sleep is a biological imperative. It's not a crime. And you people don't even think about bringing this back. I don't care if there's a homeless shelter here. We're not gonna make people criminals just because they don't have a house. And if you want to do that, you're criminals.
Mr. Hall, please have a seat.
My name is Wendy. I'm a community organizer at the Public Housing Association of Residents. I will be speaking on behalf of myself and only myself tonight. I'm also a UVA alum who chose to remain, remain in Charlottesville. I want to respond to some things that have come up in this meeting. I first want to respond to this idea that any increase in housing supply is a helpful increase. If you are wealthy, you can find an apartment or a place to live in Charlottesville pretty easily. There is not a lack in general housing supply. The housing crisis is indeed affordable housing that people can actually afford. Building more student housing does not house more black and brown people. It does not make housing more affordable because it doesn't increase the supply that needs to be increased. It just displaces more black and brown folks from where they were previously living because now a gigantic student apartment is in their backyard. But also, students want affordable housing, too. It is not a lack of student housing that is pushing students to rent single-family homes. It is the gross, frankly appalling excess of luxury student housing on West Main that many UVA students cannot even afford that is pushing them into historically black neighborhoods like Grady Avenue and Gordon Avenue. We need to build student housing somewhere else, far away from West Main and historically black neighborhoods, like on JPA or the literal swaths of land owned by the UVA Foundation, and stop supporting huge, multi-billion-dollar apartments bought by out-of-time developers who know nothing about this city trying to dispossess and displace more black folks. There was a statement that students are themselves transient as individuals, but as a whole, they are a permanent fixture in Charlottesville. Students who attend an institution that does not pay taxes to this city should not be city council's priority. I think the more important population here is the black and brown, long-term residents of Charlottesville, many of whom can trace their lineage to the enslaved laborers who built the very plantation institution that students attend today. Black people, low-income people, unhoused people are the stable population in this city who are the constituents who pay taxes, elect you into office, whose neighborhoods and homes are being destroyed and gentrified by UVA students. Those are the people you should be accountable to. Second to last thing I'll say, we should and can house everyone in this city. Every year, the point-in-time count shows that there are around two hundred unhoused people in Charlottesville from year to year. Across Charlottesville, we probably have that many or close to that many empty apartment units. There is not a crisis in the supply of housing. There's a crisis in deeply affordable housing. We just need to be willing to prioritize it. Last thing I will say, it is public information that at least half of the board of directors of the Friends of Downtown Charlottesville, who notoriously are anti-unhoused people, as we saw tonight, were top donors to the campaigns of some counselors sitting up here tonight. So we know exactly who has been bought, and we know exactly where this anti-camping ordinance came from.
Just back to, I'm gonna be very brief. The work group that worked on the ordinance, what was really strange and not well thought out of is that there was absolutely no people who are unhoused in that work group. I've, I find that kind of patronizing because it's like saying, look here, little child. We know what you need. You don't know, so we're not gonna ask you. We're just gonna tell you. And grown adults know what they need. Secondly, although the ordinance has, you know, been tabled, the problem has not. And so it is still very important that finding housing for the homeless and affordable housing for many people in Charlottesville should be a priority. When my mother was in hospice, I had to pick a priority, you know? I couldn't do everything. So she became my priority, and housing the people who live and work in Charlottesville really should be your priority. Other things need to just go to the side. You need to concentrate on that because it makes no sense that people sleep outside in the rain and in the snow. Lastly, when I first came up here, I said I was very disheartened because I looked at one of the lead city officials on his phone and looking through his notes while other people were talking. I leave the meeting the same way because I sat there and I listened to how, when someone was talking, people talked over them. They yelled. They wouldn't listen. You don't have to lack what people say, but just common courtesy and respect would mandate that you would at least listen. And then when there's a chance for comments, then you can respond. But if we can't respect each other here, there will, nothing will be accomplished. I'm just as passionate about finding homes for the homeless, but I won't do it by disrespecting other people who have a different view. And I just hope that your passion still allows you to realize that we're all human. We all have to work together, and if we don't respect each other, we're just gonna come here and box. And that's just stupid. So I hope from now on that, that we can just show each other some respect. You know, wait your turn. Don't yell out. It's not a hard thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else would like to, to speak? Okay, Mr. Hall, this is your, your second time? Thank you.
I think Ms. Johnson is.
Oh, Ms. Johnson, and then you, Mr. Hall. Sorry.
Good evening again. My name is Joy Johnson. And there's a couple of things I just want to say. When you mentioned about the fine, the $250 fine, please add court costs to that because that's gonna add up also. Just wanted to put that out there because I didn't know if anybody, nobody spoke about that. I'm, I'm here to talk again about the twelve-story building that it will be overshadowing West Haven. Again, it was very disrespectful, the way the developer approached this. But anyway, I just have a few things I just want to say. I know that it went before the BAR, and I don't know what the BAR might do about it in next meeting, but if it comes back to you, I would like for council to just stop the madness. Here are some points that I would like to have you right the wrong of how we looked at the, the, the change in the zoning law. First, council can take the lead. It's legal responsibility to reverse arrows in correcting inclusive zoning. Second, enforce including, including new legislation to deny visual population, i.e. building pollution, i.e. height, building height. Three, give priority of land use management to those most negatively impacted. Four, listen, not just simply hear the voice and cry carefully recommendation of black and poor. And reaffirm commitment to real inclusive zoning that goes beyond parcel development. So those are some things that we talked to some group of people that I just wanted to put out there. The other thing I wanted to say is that, as I was sitting back there listening about the demolition of Worthington, I'm like, we really ain't paying attention to what is happening to our community. Because UVA is building a monster development on Tenth and Worthington, which is going to impact the Tenth and, um, Tenth and Page neighborhood. And now to have another building on Worthington, it is going to impact. I don't know what's happening to the city of Charlottesville anymore. Because there was a time that people would talk about preservation of neighborhoods. I had a friend who was on council who said to me, and I know my time is running out, that poor people need to come up with a plan about how they should exist as community. And when she said that, it kind of startled me. But I'm beginning to understand what she's talking about. And how UVA and how the city of Charlottesville is becoming an ACC community. It's all about the students, and we need to stop it because the students are not the only one who lives in this community.
Thank you. Mr. Hall would be our, our last speaker for this evening.
I want to make an announcement about what I want to propose. There's plenty of time for the city council to mull this over. I once, when I ran for city council, and was defeated three times when I did it. Always Paul Long was right up in front of me, and Paul Long was my mentor, really. I used to go up Midway Manor and talk to him. We'd get together. Paul Long was a fine person from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and served on the city council up there somewhere. He was very sage, had a lot of good wisdom. You know, I might say that with wisdom comes age, with age comes wisdom. That's my own saying. We are in January going to be honoring Martin Luther King Jr. But in my opinion, there's a man still among us, right here in Charlottesville, that's much greater. His name is Uriah J. Fields. Uriah J. Fields, I'm not gonna say where he lives, but he's here still. The Montgomery Bus Boycott occurred right after Rosa Parks did her thing. And Uriah J. Fields organized it as the secretary. He organized the Montgomery Bus Boycott as a response. Of course, Martin Luther King got the credit for it, but these, these, this is the inner circle right here. You know, I've got my hand. I've got Uriah J. Fields, Robert S. Grates, Ralph David Abernathy, Fred D. Gray, Martin Luther King Jr. at the top, and we're gonna change that picture and make it look more profound, you know? And Edgar D. Nixon, something like Edgar D. Nixon. But I've got a picture of Uriah J. Fields. It's really fine. I mean, the way he had to suffer and all. That's the hallmark of greatness, is how much you have to suffer and still persevere. So if we honor these men, we'll have a portrait. Now, I, I suggest we have a portrait of Heather Hire and Susan Bro, her mother, and hang it in the hallway. That didn't go so well. It didn't get done. I think this time, and I still got the same lady that I want to paint this. I want the city council to commission it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall.
I want the city council to pay her.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
$300 an hour.
Thank you.
To do the portrait.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.